Do we have any public comments this morning? I don't, none? Nothing Samantha? Okay, fine. Um, there is no, okay, no one wants to make any public comments, okay? All right, we now have our consent agenda?
I was interested in hearing a little bit about just number one and number four. So that I move approval of the consent agenda minus items number one and four, and we can move those to the action items.
Okay.
I'll support that, so I'll second it.
Okay. Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. DeVos?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Um, all right, so we will then start our agenda with consent item number one. Which is the board order for Sizemore.
Morning Board.
Good morning.
The Board conducted the Sizemore Road legalization hearing on January 22nd, and at the-
Would you be able to identify yourself on the record?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Chris Doty, Road Department Director. With me is Cody Smith, County Engineer.
Thank you.
Yeah. At the conclusion of the, of the public hearing on the 22nd, the written record was left open for seven days. The Hudson Family Trust submitted additional testimony on January 27th through their attorney at County Work Session Meeting in the afternoon. Road Department and legal staff then held an informal meeting with Dr. Les Hudson and his attorney on the 27th. We felt that at the conclusion of that meeting, we had kind of reached an amicable understanding moving forward on, on what we could do, based on some of the testimony that was submitted, to help address some of the concerns of the Hudson Family Trust with regards to the right-of-way of Sizemore Road and, and operation of it. We understand at this point that the Hudson's no longer share that sentiment expressed at the January 27th meeting, and have now requested a 30-foot legalization as a part of, of this, this process. From our perspective, Board, this is a, pretty much a textbook legalization. The state of Oregon built this road over 100 years ago, and even back then, I don't think they were in the habit of, of building roads on, on properties that they did not have permission to do so, or that did not belong to them. We don't have that documentation from 100 years ago, which is not uncommon at all. But that's what the legalization process is for. Cody laid out the case at the January 22nd meeting regarding, you know, the history of the road, the amount of, of public use, and, and, and that part is not in dispute. Legalization for less than 60 feet is very problematic for the Road Department. The record clearly prescribes that we legalize 60 feet in this matter. Specific to the Sizemore Road Bridge project, which has now been delayed two months, we need this right-of-way to move forward with the improvements that we have in store. Acquiring additional easements from the Hudson's and Tummelo Irrigation District, as proposed by the Hudson's to supplement the 30-foot right-of-way dedication that they're requesting, would add for unnecessary expense and, and time to this process. Legalization for less than 60 feet will, we think, kind of complicate our ability to legalize for that minimum standard in, in future legalizations that we feel will come before this Board, and we feel that would complicate, you know, our ability to present that in, in that matter. So with that, Board, we respectfully request that the Board approve the Sizemore Road legalization as proposed, 60 feet.
So, yeah, it's squarely in the domain of a decision of the Board at this point, is my, you know, my understanding here. I did make a statement in our work session previously that I do support kind of the, the textbook legalization procedure at Deschutes County, respecting the history, the documentation and dial showing this right-of-way on the, you know, the, the layer of, of public right-of-ways in Deschutes County, referring to that was there before the, the current ownership. And then if, yeah, if there's other discussions, it would happen in reference to the county's legalization approval, you know, for the party, if they feel like they're aggrieved, it would go from there, is my point.
Okay. So you're supporting-
Yeah.
-the 60-foot legalization?
Yes.
Okay.
So, um, thanks for making the effort to meet with Hudson Family and their attorney. I'm, I'm sorry really that something didn't work out where everybody was happy with it. I think this is something, a case where sometimes you own something, you don't realize every, you know, there weren't really set rules for a lot of years. I'm supportive of a 60-foot roadway or easement, with the caveat that I hope we can keep it looking more or less like it is now, and not expanding it, not, I think there's been a lot of discussion here about habitat and wildlife and people's use of the area, et cetera. And I'm, I'm good with all of that. I just, I wish we could have worked this out. I do think we need to get this done for the purpose of the Board, so I'm going to support this. What is the appeal rights then of the Hudson Family Trust, and what, if they try to challenge this, is there still an appeal right, or? I'm just kind of interested what the course might be if that is appealed.
There may be a few options. One would certainly, I believe, be a writ of review through the Circuit Court. If there were some sort of federal takings claim, that might be able to circumvent the, the local courts and go directly to the federal court if necessary. So there, I, I suspect there are some additional options, and, and the legal department is, you know, ready and prepared to deal with those, should those come about.
I see Mr. Hudson is here, so there, you know, that could happen, and that we'll just, we would do this, approve this under the possibility that happens. And then in that case, there still could be, I think the goal for us has been to try, among other things, is try to get the bridge done this year, because we have the funds, I guess, and the state does, and I hope we can still do that, but I'm, that's Ryan.
And I agree, when we originally had the Sizemore Bridge up for, you know, the ODOT contract, I thought, oh, this is amazing that, okay, we've had this 100-year bridge. And apparently, things weren't quite done legally in 1914, but I feel like what the research that's been presented for the history of the property, it seems like the county does need to finish this project. You know, the bridge, it's over 100 years old, that's quite significant, and I would hate to lose that ODOT funding to complete the work that needs to be done. So I'm supportive, so.
So with that, I'll move Board Signature of Order Number 2020-002, completing the legalization procedures for a portion of Sizemore Road.
And I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Mr. DeVos?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you. Okay, now we have consent item number four.
Yeah, so that was the, I just had some questions about that. It's just about the OHA Amendment. I don't know who's here for that, but, oh.
Good morning.
Hi, I'm Kathy Christensen. I'm a Health Services Supervisor with the Advancement and Protections Team.
My question, thanks for coming today, was, I see this is an amendment of original grant, I guess, from the OHA. I remember when that came through, and so I just was kind of curious what, I couldn't quite understand from the summary, are you getting more money, or are you condensing the money into one year?
Yeah, this is an interesting grant. So it's a five-year grant, and each year we have to do a new budget amendment, so, and every year our budget has changed a little bit. So this is the third year of our five-year grant. And so we just submitted a new budget for this year, which started January 1.
How were you able to get such a big increase from $600,000 to a million?
So it, so the million is the three-year accumulative amount that we've received. It's not just for this year.
Right.
Yeah. So each year that the large amount will keep going up, so it's just going to be over a five-year period of time. We ask for a new amount every year, depending on staff salaries and, yeah.
So yours, so yours, it looks like it's increasing, but you're just adding the next year?
We're just adding the next year, yeah.
Okay, and you have to do this amendment? Because I was wondering how we, one, why we were able to get so much more money in one particular program, then two, you know, how, how many people does this serve currently? Do you have any idea?
Serve as in?
In terms of, I guess, interact- In terms of, I guess, interact with? I mean, there's, it looks like you do a variety of levels of.
Yeah, so we have, we do a number, so there are different ways in which we are going about this grant. We're doing a lot of testing events, and that's tri-county-wide. Also, this grant helps us with some of our STD work in general. So it gives us some funding to have more staff to work on cases. And they're all increasing, they all increased last year. So also, I think one of the big things is we were able to, last year we had 10 new HIV diagnoses, and the year before there were only two. So I think we brought a lot more awareness to HIV testing, and we were able to test ourselves. So we probably touched around 500, 600 people in outreach testing around the tri-county area, which is going out with the van and doing testing with vulnerable populations. We also do provider outreach, so we're doing a lot of education with providers because we can't be the only testers. So we're touching a lot of providers, we're-
Providers means doctors and-
Doctors' offices, yeah, yeah. And then we also are doing a lot of work with people who are HIV-infected and not on treatment.
Oh, yeah, thanks.
What is our HIV population then for Deschutes County? Do you have a number on that?
How many people are living here who have HIV?
Right.
Yeah. The estimates for 2018 were around 140 or so people. The tri, tri-county-wide, it's around 200.
200?
Those are estimates, so.
Okay, yeah, we really don't know.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you so much, because I, yeah, I was, I'm glad you pulled that one. I was wondering too.
This grant confuses everybody.
I know.
And it's a calendar year grant, and we work on a fiscal year, and it's-
Right.
But we're happy to have it, so.
Yes, it is, but it is $418,000. It's a significant amount of money for just this one calendar year.
Yeah, it is.
So, okay, thank you.
I'll move Chair Signature Document Number 2020-125, Amendment to Oregon Health Authority.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you. Tom?
Thank you Commissioners, I think I'm more of the conduit for this particular item. I know there's a group of folks here from the League of Women Voters of Deschutes County who would like to say a few words. I'd invite them to come up, but I just, one thing I'll point out for the Board. So we have two celebrations this year. One is the 100-year anniversary of the League of Women Voters, which we're doing now. Also, later this year, in August, our County Clerk Nancy Blankenship is coordinating a celebration for the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment, giving women the right to vote. So that will be a, a separate likely proclamation and perhaps some other events associated with that also. But today, we're celebrating the League of Women Voters, so I'll invite them to speak.
Thank you, Tom, and thank you Commissioners. We're real happy to be here, and it's a big, exciting year for us. I'm Jerry Hauser, I'm the League's current president. A little bit about our history, well, the Deschutes County League has been here around, since 1964. And there was a Bend League, I believe, before us. We don't have exact dates, but the League of Women Voters of the United States was formed, the actual birthday is February 14th in 1920. And it was in anticipation of the 19th Amendment. It was, 33 states had ratified at that point. So Carrie Chapman Cat, who was the founder, her goal was to finish the fight and aid in the reconstruction of the nation. And so that, anyway, so we're very happy. It was a seven-decade fight to get to that point in 1920. And so, and today, I want to mention that the League is more important today than ever because there's still voter disenfranchisement and voter suppression happening. In 1920, not all women were given the right to vote. In particular, women of color and Native American women and men weren't even considered citizens until 1924. So just wanted to mention that there are still struggles in voting, so. Thank you very much, but we're very happy to be here and celebrate this 100-year anniversary of our organization. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry, for coming. I know, I was explaining to my granddaughter, who's 13, that we saw the exhibit, and I go, Chloe, women did not get to vote till 100 years ago. So it's really not that long. Did anyone else want to speak?
She said it.
Yep.
Okay.
You did a great job.
Okay.
Introduce your, your-
The team?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
This is Colette Blumeister, and she's on our 100-year committee and our Special Events Committee. Kim Smith is our past president. She was president for four years, and, which is a long time. It's a, it's a big job, I'm finding out. And, and Mimi, she's our jack-of-all-trades. She's on about, she's on several committees. She, she's our membership chair. She runs our book club called the Freedom Readers. And what else, you're on the 100-year committee, and also the Get Out the Vote Committee, so.
Right.
Which, which, well, we're all also on the 100-year committee, and so, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Wonderful.
I had a couple of questions. So one was, did it just happen to coincide with Valentine's Day? Or was there no Valentine's Day at the time? Or what's, is there any connection to that? Any idea?
That's a good question. So it is kind of hard to have celebrations on the 14th and, you know, on Valentine's Day.
And it came out of the Women's Suffrage Movement, which they were have, it came out of when they were having their big meetings, and it just happened to be on that day.
Yeah.
I don't think there was a significant-
Yeah.
It was no coincidence, right?
As far as we know. Yeah, there was a convention in Chicago called the National American Women's Suffrage Association going on that week of, in February, so, and it just happened that day, I guess, so.
Well, the state of Oregon celebrates a birthday, or whatever you call it, on that same day also.
Oh, in 1912, Oregon women had the right to vote already in, in local-
Ah, but I mean, 1859, Oregon.
Oh.
Came a state.
Came a state.
And the 14th of February is the date that we celebrate that also.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So, a couple of thoughts. One is, I was trying to think back of which of my, I knew my great-grandmother. She was born in the 1870s, and she died in the 1960s. And so she probably would have been the first person in my family to vote, but she would have been, you know, almost 50 by the time she voted. And she was quite a, an item in terms of character. She wrote a book, a big, long essay called Tears and Cheers of Pioneers. And, boy, it's a, you know, a year after year, well, you know, this happened and that happened, and, boy, it's kind of a grim life on the front, they're frontier people, and so, what's that?
Especially for women.
Yeah, well, well, really both, I think. I mean, they all struggled on the, you know, on the frontier. It was a tough go, you know, people, people died and people struggled. So, but what a, you know, obviously a great thing. You can see how the role of women's changed completely. When I was in high school, kind of in the, in the 70s, when the, the, the more recent roles of women got even, you know, took on totally different, and now you can see it in our, in our communities, in our state, in our nation, much, much different, so.
Well, the Equal Rights Amendment just passed in Virginia, the 38th state. That is going back, of course, to the law courts because it had sidden down back during, I think it was-
70s?
No, in the 60s.
Well, they moved it to 82, but it did not, we didn't get enough states to pass it. But now there are enough states that have passed it, so that it's going to be going back to see if it can, they can make it so it can still pass and go back to the Congress.
So we still have work to do, so.
We still have lots of-
Well, but in Oregon, we have a, a woman governor, a woman Secretary of State, a woman Chief Justice, woman Speaker the-
Yes.
Sheriff's Commission. I haven't gotten that far yet. And the Speaker, the Speaker of the House. We've, you know, so it's, Oregon's really more of a leader than a lot of places, I think, in terms of that.
Oregon's a leader in many, many things, especially our vote by mail. And that, we, we go to conventions, and it is, everybody is like, oh my God, how did you get that? Because it is the best thing, it's, it makes it so people can vote. It makes it easy. Where polling places are being closed down, such as in Texas in poor areas, they have to drive three hours to get to a polling place, and they have to stand in line for six hours because there aren't enough of them. We are so lucky to be here. Oregon is first in the nation in that for voting and being able to vote. It is, we're, we should be very proud of our state.
Yeah, we were at a national convention, and they talked about Oregon, you know, having the vote by mail. So, so we were talked about a lot at the national convention of the Leagues.
And then also the motor voter, having that.
Yeah, yeah, that, motor voter.
That has really increased. And we are, we're not seeing percentages that we would love, like we'd love to see 100% more people voting, but we are seeing increases, so. It's been a really great thing.
You had plenty to say.
Yes.
No, it's great. We got you going, got you going.
Is someone going to read the proclamation?
I'm thinking you may be.
Maybe the Chair.
Yeah.
Hey.
Do we need to pass it? Do we need to?
Oh, I do have it here. Okay, so that means-
And it's a good size font for us.
So should we move to approve?
Oh, there you go, you got it.
Oh, we should approve it first, okay.
I would move to approve the proclamation, recognize the 100-year history of the League of Women Voters of Deschutes County.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay, I guess I get the choice, the privilege, and the fact that I am the chair, I get to read this. Yes, an elected woman, yes. Recognizing the 100-year history of the League of Women Voters of Deschutes County. Whereas, the League of Women Voters of Deschutes County is a nonpartisan political organization founded February 14th, 1920, to serve new women voters in carrying out their newly acquired responsibilities associated with the passage of the 19th Amendment to the Constitution of the United States of America. And, whereas, members of the League of Women Voters of Deschutes County consist of women and men who work to improve our system of government and to impact public policies through citizen education and advocacy. And, whereas, the League of Women Voters of Deschutes County provides information on candidates and issues for elections, encourages voter registration and informed voting. And, whereas, the League of Women Voters of Deschutes County strive to earn the public trust by respectfully bringing elected leaders and the public together through civil means and through thoughtfully advancing solutions to pressing problems. And, whereas, League of Women Voters of Deschutes County members strive to serve their communities, to make them strong, safe, fair, and vibrant places to live. And, whereas, the League of Women Voters of Deschutes County collaborates with other organizations to achieve mutual goals and increase civic participation. And, whereas, Deschutes County in Oregon has benefited tremendously from the countless volunteer hours donated by the League member over its 100-year history. Be it resolved that the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners recognizes the contributions made by the League of Women Voters over the past 100 years, extends heartfelt congratulations to the members of this organization on their occasion of this anniversary, and offers best wishes for the continued success of the League for the next 100 years. Dated this 12th day of February 2020 by the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners. And we will be signing this, so.
Thank you.
Maybe a photo opportunity here.
Oh, yes, we should have a photo, right? Oh, good, I wore my red jacket. Let's have a photo.
See if we can have an official proclamation to give them our-
Official framework?
An official proclamation, an parchment.
Can we have an unpagement paper?
Yeah, we, we can. Good, thank you very much. Thanks a lot. Thank you.
One, two, three. And one more, one, two, three. Thank you. Can we get it with the proclamation?
Let's hold up a proclamation.
But they don't know the difference. That's perfect. Okay. All right, one, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, have a great day.
Thanks. Well, I want to hear about this.
Thank you for coming in, guys. Oh, thank you.
We have one, August 26th.
Yeah.
That's great, thanks.
Okay. All right. Let's see, Whitney?
This morning we have John Stark and Caprielle Lewis here to discuss the Greater Redmond Enterprise Zone with you. And I'm going to turn things over to them and hand out a few handouts and get the PowerPoint up and running.
Great, good morning. For the record, again, John Stark, Senior Director, Redmond Economic Development, and also the Enterprise Zone Manager for the Greater Redmond Enterprise Zone, the Redmond City Limits portion of that.
And Caprielle Lewis, and I'm the Sisters Area Director for Echo, and the Zone Manager for the Sisters portion of the Greater Redmond.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
So we're before you today to seek support in redesignation of the Redmond, Greater Redmond Enterprise Zone that includes Sisters. And we designated this round, so they're good for 10 years in 2009. And what's being handed out is an Enterprise Zone flyer that describes the program. Now, I know Commissioners, you've been a part of this program for a number of years through approvals for extended abatements and through several redesignations in other communities that are in within Deschutes County. And so, but I wanted to provide the flyer to you. It's of the Redmond portion of the Enterprise Zone, but it mirrors the Sisters flyer that has the same criteria as it relates to using the Enterprise Zone. I'm going to move up to the podium so I can go ahead and advance the slides. Do you want to join me, or you want to stay here?
Yeah.
Honestly, I was hoping to stay seated, but we'll stand for it. A little easier to run the show from here. So this is a slideshow we put together to talk about how the Enterprise Zone works, the history of the zone, some performance data of the last couple of years. And so we're going to cover kind of an overview, the zone performance, the consideration-free application. And we've already gone to our individual city councils with this. So the zone sponsors are the jurisdictions in which the Enterprise Zones exist. And so City of Sisters, City of Redmond, and Deschutes County are the three zone sponsors of this. And we've been in the last two months before our individual councils to seek direction from them on their interest to redesignate. And so we're kind of finalizing that with you all today as the third Enterprise Zone sponsor. So a little overview, the Redmond Zone, as a standalone, was established in 1988. And then renewed again in 1998, then again in 2009. So again, these Enterprise Zone designations are good for 10 years. In terms of, you know, history, since the very beginning in 1988, the Redmond Zone, not including Sisters, has helped about 154 firms create over 3,300 jobs and over 165 million in capital investment. We added the Sisters Zone in 2009, and we've got some performance data since the inception of, of that for Sisters as well. And so just in short, the Enterprise Zone is a three-year property tax abatement program for traded sector businesses. So you must be companies that are non-retail, non-commercial in nature, have customers generally elsewhere, or provide B-to-B services to other companies. So not to the end user in a retail-type format. And it provides three- to five-year property tax exemptions under the standard program. They must create at least one new job if they're a new business, or add 10% to the existing employment if they're an expanding business. To receive a five-year program, they have to meet certain wage requirements of $68,000, $68,357 per year. And that's a loaded wage, so it's really a compensation standard that includes medical, dental, vision, holiday, vacation, and some other monetary benefits that the company provides. And so that extended abatement can be extended for one year, for four years in total, or five. Not all property is exempted, so land is not exempted, rolling stock, for example. Certain items of personal property can be exempted, but the real property, the equipment that they use to manufacture goods or to produce revenue- or to produce revenue, can be exempted, and then the buildings, of course. And so, we've used this program for a number of years to help companies expand, to use it as a tool to help lure companies in. When companies come in that are looking at us, they typically look at, you know, what can we do to help financially support their investment? And then they also look to, you know, why a community might be interested in having you here. Is there anything the community would extend to support the business either relocating or expanding? And this is one of our number-one tools. Yep. And so, the redesignation process is, used to be more competitive, but you have to meet certain criteria of economic disadvantages. And so, most of that's around wages. Again, it's sponsored by all the public agencies, which the zone is delineated. Again, I went over the three sponsors. It cannot exceed 15 square miles. We're under that presently, so we may make a few boundary revisions as it relates to UGB expansions. And you know of one that's happening in Redmond right now with the land swap with DSL. So we'll make sure that that's in the Enterprise Zone as well, so we can take advantage of the program. It possesses undeveloped industrial land that is properly a zone and has infrastructure. So most of the areas inside the city of Redmond, UGB, and most of the areas are well-established infrastructure. Some extensions will need to be there, but it's in the area. So provides a good opportunity for business to, to expand there. And then the Enterprise Zone has to demonstrate a likelihood for success. So can't designate these and then have it just go dormant. And frankly, the Enterprise Zones in central Oregon, some of the most well-used incentives in the state. Redmond's got 26 some companies active in the program right now, and I think you have five or six.
Eight and two more coming.
Eight? Eight and two more coming. She's catching up.
Wow. Sisters.
So the community also provides some benefits. We'll talk a little bit about that. Impacts on the property tax revenue. We'll talk about the boundary briefly. There is a hotel motel option, and there's electronic commerce designation. I'll talk about that. And then the local incentive package. So this is a little bit about the Redmond's history. So again, 154 companies, 3,300 jobs, 165 million in investment it's supported during those property tax exemptions, three to five years. And then, this is really since its inception. And a good example of a company, because companies, this is not a one-time use. Companies can expand, expand. PC6 Slaughter's a good example. So they've used that program five times. They've leveraged the program to create 465 jobs. And in recent years, their wages have exceeded that county average, so they've been able to take advantage of these four- and five-year programs. And so, right now, they actually have two that are active. They're layered upon each other for two other expansions that they've got going. And then what sets Redmond apart beyond just this incentive package, the cost of doing business is very competitive. We have available flexible land, a lot of choices in our community, the lifestyle, the cost and access to labor. We continually hear how strong our workforce is, and that's a major site selection criteria. And then, the Enterprise Zone also has some local benefits that I'll cover just briefly. To give you a kind of a one-year snapshot, so we wanted to give you like a recent year of activity. So 1819, this is after the property tax year 1819. There were 12 projects in the program. The assessed value of the Redmond portion of those projects was 19.37 million. The taxes that would have been improved, imposed across all districts was about 348,000. The City of Redmond General Fund, so they were kind of interested in hearing what their part of the total tax to be imposed, about 85,000. Yours is about, Scott's in the room, a quarter of that?
And it's about, County General Fund's about seven and a half percent.
Yeah. So less than a quarter of that. And then the reported job creation with that particular year was about 365 jobs in Redmond. And then this year, we have about almost 10 million, $9.2 million in investment, investments that'll occur coming on this year. So as they go through and start assessing and then providing the exemptions, we've got about 9.2 million. And then Cappy's gonna talk a little bit about Sisters.
So established in 2009 in Sisters, and really, there wasn't a lot of activity with the Enterprise Zone early on. It took a while for us to use this, this particular incentive. But once it, it really started taking off, we are up to eight new traded sector companies. And as I just mentioned, there's two more. One, we submitted the application and approval for a few months ago, and another one will be coming. So 247 jobs affiliated with this incentive, 14 million in new capital. And in terms of economic multiplier, what this does with traded sector, you're very familiar with, with that. And obviously, public sector benefits. So for an example, in Sisters, the Laird Superfood Project, we're up to about 110 employees, and they're utilizing the program. It was really important to them to understand that they had state support, regional support with your Economic Development Loan Fund. Thank you very much for that, as well as the City of Sisters Forgivable Loan Program. So that really helped them dig roots in Sisters. And they, they really, we'll say over and over again, without those, they could have chosen to put their business anywhere else. So. Total investment on the application is just over $8.5 million. Again, what sets Sisters apart, our culture, our values of our community, our authenticity, our school district, natural resources, very nearby, quality of life. We do have competitive labor costs as well, so when we're talking about competing against California or some of our neighboring states, we look at wage levels and cost of doing business. And we have access to a talented workforce locally, and we are pulling people regionally, as well as from out of state, to come to Sisters. So.
Just one more.
Okay. And again, a snapshot of a year. So 18 to 19, five projects, $8.1 million in assessed value. We're looking at about, and I want to emphasize that these are, we're not taking anything away. These are taxes that will roll on once that business has been, I've never used the extended abatement, so we haven't had a five-year program. But for our three-year programs, these taxes will roll on. It's the year after the year that these equipment and buildings are put into use. And so, and then they're typically on a three-year abatement program, and then they roll into the tax roll. 121 jobs affiliated with that, so.
I had a question.
Please, go ahead.
Clarification, Scott, were you saying that's seven and a half percent of the overall tax base? Or, so when they give a number here of 127,000, is it seven and a half percent of that probably?
Probably the County General Fund share that, probably about 10,000.
Then that's what I was figuring, yeah.
I think it's important to note, there's also on your flyer what's called a super Enterprise Zone. Technically speaking, it's called the Long-Term Rural Enterprise Zone. It's never been used in Deschutes County. It's been used a little bit in Crook County. And that's because in order to receive a long-term rural, which is a seven-to-15-year program that's negotiated between the taxing jurisdiction, in this case, the Enterprise Zone sponsor and the company, they have to invest in our zone at least 12 and a half million and create 50 jobs within five years. So we haven't had a project that met that criteria to even ask today. We've had over 12 million-dollar projects, but we haven't met the job criteria in that timeline, or we've met the job criteria and not the investment. And so, we just, that hasn't been used. While he's not saying it won't, we'll retain that rural status, so when we redesignate, that'll still be available, but typically, it's larger projects that you see utilize that. So it's an option. It just hasn't been exercised, because folks hasn't, haven't met it. There is a hotel motel designation, so you can allow this designation in when you adopt. That allows non-traded sector businesses, some would call them traded sector in terms of tourism and inbound activity for tourism. But you have to designate that now. We've not had the hotel motel designation. Redmond has opted out of that at this point. Sisters is having a discussion about that. The concern in some cases is you have large investment, right, because it's costly to build these. But the wages for the jobs inside don't compete with the manufacturing wages that we have here. So communities have to kind of decide if they want to venture into that. And your conversations are coming up in the near future.
In our advisory board level at this point in time, and then we'll advise the city council as to what we decide to do.
And then the electronic commerce. We established this several years ago and used it to recruit a company called Altrak, which was an e-commerce, web-develop, web-purchased company. So you could buy outdoor clothing, much like Amazon is today, but they were focused on outdoor clothing. And we only had two companies use it. And so, we'll probably go ahead and leave it in, because we did have two companies use it. But the legislature let the main benefit, which was the 25% tax credit against their income taxes, based on their tax burden for their investment, that's gone away. So the state let the electronic commerce portion of the Enterprise Zone sunset. So the only remaining benefit is you can reduce the minimum value for personal property to 1,000 from 50,000. So we'll probably just leave it in, because we can. In case they ever redesignate it again in the state, then we'd be automatically in. So.
Commissioner DeBonne, you should add that to your bills that were sunsetted success stories.
Yes.
It could be the first entry.
But this is, and we're gonna recommend that we leave this in as part of the zone, for sure, because when you look at so many companies now who are dependent on their computers for, in every way, in technology, and to attract some high-tech companies, I think it's really important to see that there is a level of personal property now that, that they can record for a temporary abatement.
Moving on, so we do have this local incentive package, so local jurisdictions can add local benefits. This is on the back page of your flyer. We reduce permit fees, SDC fees, water and sewer hookup fees, water and sewer usage fees. It's all based on the number of jobs and the wages they're paying for those jobs. So the higher wages, the more jobs, you get further discounts. And this can make a big difference to a company that's, you know, got a lot of SDC charges and so forth. And so, we implemented this in 2009 when we redesigned it again. And when we did a focus group with our businesses in Redmond to see what really mattered of this list, they said it's not really the list or the number. It's the fact the community take one step further in helping us establish our company here. And one company even went on to say, you know, I don't have to finance these reductions. So it makes it easier for me to go get my financing in terms of the ratios of the capital I have to come up with, the capital the bank comes up with, and so it's just, it's a big benefit. And then the other one is the expedited permitting process. And they really enjoyed that, because time is money when it comes to permits. And so, in Redmond, I know Sisters does this too, you can reduce your permit times anywhere from a third to half.
So kind of a question about specific cities, municipalities, Deschutes County, you know, waiving hookup fees for water and sewer. Not everybody can even imagine that, is my, my thought process. You know, City of Redmond just happens to have kind of the capacity and the infrastructure and even the tax base to be able to think about that. I just know that some other municipalities, they're just woefully underfunded and system development charges hardly keep up with the needs anyways.
Well, I won't say it's been easy. Our internal system that tracks this stuff has taken a lot, we've taken a lot of work to get this thing as close to perfect as we can. And I know Sisters isn't exercising all of these either.
Yeah.
Because of the same reason. And so, it's, it is one more step. But yeah, you're right. Some people aren't healthy enough to offer these, especially when there's growth like there is, and they gotta draw on those very accounts to pay for infrastructure.
Not even just health, but I mean, as elected officials, sometimes the choices that are made 10, 15, and 20, or the incorporation of a city, you know, 50 years ago, this is where you can even have those conversations. Just interesting dynamics, yeah.
So these are our boundaries. There's a map on the board here. So this is the Redmond Zone. On the lower left is the Sisters Zone. Again, we'll evaluate to make sure we're incorporating all the UGB abatements that have been made of late. The one that's in process now, the one that was done when we brought in the annexation of the DSL lands to the south. The 40 acres that's included for housing, now again, that's housing and not industrial, but we want to make sure we incorporate all that. So we'll go through a process of delineating the zone and going through sort of the shapefile process to make sure it incorporates everything. So it may look a little bit different than this, but probably not much. And then this is our timeline. So we are before the cities in December and January. We've got to provide a notice to the taxing districts of a meeting 21 days in advance. We'll host those meetings in March. We invite them in to share their thoughts on us redesignating this zone. We'll show them a similar performance slideshow. We'll talk a little bit more about the mechanics of the zone so they understand who qualifies and who doesn't. And, and the purpose of that part is to delineate the difference between this and like urban renewal. Because urban renewal, you draw a line in the sand, and it's kind of everything, right? Everything that's new goes into this fund, tax increment financing, and that's dropped back in. In this particular case, land, certain items of personal property, they must be traded sector. It's only for a window of time, three to five years, unless you exercise the long term. But then everything comes back on the tax roll. It's not a 20- or 25-year plan. So want to make sure the taxing districts know this is very different than, than urban renewal as well. And then we've got to go through the necessary documentation, and then we've got to come back to you and go through resolution. So we'll go through Sisters, Redmond, and then come back to you and go through necessary resolutions, which we'll help draft with your staff and get that put in front of you with the hopeful completion time somewhere in May, so that we can submit by June 1 to Business Oregon and, and ask them for approval, which it has to be designated by the State Director of Business Oregon. So gotta get that in by June 1. We're happy to take any questions. Do you have anything to add, Cappy?
Maybe that the Forest Service property in Sisters is within the Enterprise Zone, as well as the Sisters Airport.
Great.
Yes.
So hopefully, we're looking for support moving forward.
I'm supportive of the, of the redesignation, as you've explained it. So I guess we have to pass a resolution a few months from now, but yeah, I'm supportive of that. How much land is still remaining, I should, in the two Enterprise Zones that are undeveloped? Any idea how many acres?
Boy, we're filling up fast in Sisters. There'll be about 15 acres that we're currently in the process of assisting the private developer to convert to light industrial. That'd be 15 acres that I'm looking forward to having, to, to working with developer on, on that.
Is that the Forest Service?
That's the north parcel of the Forest Service property. And then the airport property potentially, we attracted a significant project. We did lose that project. But there's a portion of the airport property that has attracted traded sector in the past. And certainly, there's traded sector present there now, so there's an opportunity there. And our Sun Ranch or our North Sisters Business Park, Laird Superfood is in our North Sisters Business Park. Certainly, this was an incentive that helped them decide to, to put roots in Sisters. We only have about five parcels left in there, but I, I would like to clarify that, but we're, we're building quickly. And it's an interesting, there's a residential component there, so we weren't, I wasn't certain how that was going to work. But we've got a real blend of workforce housing with some service businesses, as well as traded sector. So it seems to be an interesting mixed-use project area in the Sun Ranch.
So I have the luxury of, we just did a buildable lens inventory through Eco Northwest as part of our comp plan. So we have 2,000 acres available, but that includes 720. Cappy's like chomping at the bit.
I know. She's rolling her eyes, is what she was doing.
We've got 700 and, or so down at the DSL property, so that's a large portion of it. But you've got some property of 200 acres, so there's some big parcels. In our community, there's not a lot of small stuff, so we're working on breaking some of that up. And then there's, not including in that 2,000 number, about 300 available industrial acres that the airport has that is not for sale. It's leased only FAA-patented land. So that's one thing that Redmond's pretty rich on, and that's developable land.
I really like the program. We've got a great history working together on this, really focused on that traded sector. Investment is, is the key to this, and knowing that it's three to five years is the window is just wonderful. So I, yeah, very supportive.
And likewise, I'm supportive, and it is amazing, the job that is, Cappy, that you're doing in Sisters. It's just kind of all come together, it seems, with the Forest Service land actually finding new homes. So. And then with Laird's operation, what the projection is for that in the future. It's quite amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Thank you, Caprielle. Cynthia. Thank you. Do you want to go ahead?
Yeah. I didn't know if you wanted to, if you were gonna, anything first, so I.
No.
Okay, then I will go. I am conveniently following the Redmond Enterprise. more perfected ordinance for this amendment, Ordinance two thousand twenty zero zero two. And we are using the hearings officer's decision as the final decision on this.
Thank you very much. So we actually need the first reading today?
So if everybody's in agreement, a motion to approve and conduct first reading today, the second reading would be fourteen days from today, if that works.
So yeah, we basically got to this point, we just didn't have it all finalized in its order form with the package. This, this packet is pretty mature, you know, it's been stable for quite a while, so the concept of moving the UGB there. So with that, I move first reading of Ordinance number two thousand twenty dash zero zero two by title only for Redmond UGB amendment.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
No.
Commissioner DeBon.
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Thank you.
So.
I just want to clarify, Commissioner DeBon will be out of the meeting in two weeks, and if you're still okay bringing this forward, I can do so unless Commissioner DeBon wants to be here for the second reading.
Well, we'll probably, I'm probably, is that the?
No, I think, is it Wednesday?
Yeah, it's the twenty...
I just happen to be going on a trip.
It's the twenty-sixth, isn't it?
Oh, okay.
Of February.
Well, I'm finding it.
Okay. We're okay, aren't we?
Yeah, so a second reading, you know, if nothing's changing, it's nothing real controversial at this point.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We need the reading by title.
Oh, by right, title only?
Yep.
I thought that's what they...
I need to read the entire...
Oh, yes, thank you.
Oh, just the title, an ordinance, amending Deschutes County Code Title twenty-three, the Deschutes County Comprehensive Plan to Adjust the Redmond Urban Growth Boundary and Comprehensive Plan Designations for Certain Properties, and Title nineteen, the Deschutes County Zoning Map to Adjust Zoning for Certain Properties.
Did you have the wrong?
Title eighteen.
Um...
Yeah, you said nineteen.
Oh, sorry, eighteen. Well, I was a year ahead. And Title nineteen, the Deschutes County Zoning Map to Adjust Zoning for Certain Properties. It's Ordinance number two thousand twenty dash zero zero two.
Thank you.
Oh, do we need to vote? Do we actually vote?
You did, yeah.
Okay, so we're good.
We voted after the second reading, we voted to actually adopt the ordinance.
Okay.
I support the second reading.
Okay. Send me a message so I can remember that.
When I'm no longer in charge, I finally figured out what you're supposed to do.
Thank you. Okay. Oh, and another first reading. Hi, Matthew. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. Matthew Martin, Deschutes County Planning Division. Yes, another ordinance before you today. This is Ordinance two thousand twenty dash zero zero three. This is adoption of a plan amendment with a goal exception to Goal eleven, public facilities and services allowing sewer on rural lands to serve exclusively the City of Bend Outback Water Facility. This is a proposal presented by the City of Bend to allow use of an existing process water line for transportation of sewer that's produced at the city's Outback Water Facility. Public hearing was conducted on February fifth. Testimony received. Board closed the record on that, and in Commissioner Henderson's absence, Commissioner Adarren DeBon voted on a two to oh, two to zero vote to approve the proposed plan amendment. So before you today is consideration of first reading of the related ordinance.
So I did support the ordinance though I wasn't here, so I would move first reading of Ordinance number two thousand twenty dash zero zero three, City of Bend Plan Amendment to For Sewer to Outback Facility.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay, so then I need to read that one. Of course I do.
I don't think I said first reading by title only.
Oh.
But, that's what I did. Oh, I did, okay.
Okay.
It's got some fluid, I just have, automatic now, okay.
Okay. And an ordinance amending Deschutes County Code Title twenty-three, the Deschutes County Comprehensive Plan to Add an Exception to Statewide Planning Goal Eleven, Public Facilities and Services, to allow sewer on rural lands to serve the City of Bend Outback Water Facility, Ordinance number two zero zero dash zero zero three. By title only, first reading.
Thank you. And on the same schedule as before, I intend on returning in two weeks for second reading and final adoption and signature.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Where is Kathleen?
Good morning, Commissioners. Kathleen Hinman, HR Director. So let's see, which one is first, the dental plan?
Dental.
So in front of you, consideration for County Administrator's Signature of Document two zero two zero dash zero seven seven, which is the Deschutes County Employee Benefits Dental Plan. This is the two thousand twenty plan year plan, so it includes updates that were previously discussed into that dental plan. This would be the plan document that's used for administering all claims and benefits for members of that plan. Is there any, and I think that it's been provided to you.
Yep. We have a copy of it. You know, this was discussed in a work session, what, a month or six weeks ago, kind of the proposed changes. And there was one, I'm on meetings for questions and answers.
Correct.
It was exciting reading. No.
It was a test at the end of the day.
You're welcome.
So I kind of, I don't know if I remember whether we talked about this or not, but I was looking at the co-pays, and there's, there's a uniform in network or out of network. Is that correct? Am I reading that right?
For the dental plan?
Yes.
Correct. So, yeah, for in-network or out-of-network, correct.
So you can go, that allows people to go to the dentist of their choice, whether that dentist has contracted with Pacific Source to be in-network or not.
Correct.
And have kind of similar fees, that's...
So the difference really would be kind of two main points, is by having a network, where for those that are on the network, those providers that are on the network, the plan is contracted at on a specific rate. So one, then the plan knows what rate we'll be paying. And second, being an in-network provider, they cannot balance bill the member. So the provider agrees to that rate, which would be the co-pay plus the agreed-upon rate. If a member chooses to see an out-of-network provider, there is not a guaranteed rate for the plan. The plan will pay usual, usual, okay, UCR rates, so usual and customary rates, and the member would pay the co-pay. Anything that the provider bills beyond the usual and customary rates could be billed by the provider to the member. And so, yes, the member absolutely has their ability to see the dentist of their choice, being aware of the financial...
So if you were actually shopping and you were looking both options, you'd have to see, if you were trying to be pragmatic with your money, how much the out-of-network dentist charges for something compared to the in...
Correct.
Network rate, which is probably something you have access to, right? Don't you, we have in, in-network rate schedules or something?
It depends on where the provider is located. So there are some things, but that is something that Pacific Source would be able to help. That's our TPA in that situation.
I'd move approval of the County Administrator's Signature of Document Number two thousand twenty dash zero seven seven, Deschutes County Health, or Employee Benefits Dental Plan.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
So next item?
Yes, please.
Okay. We have a consideration of County Administrator's Signature of Document Number two zero two zero dash zero seven eight. This would be for approval of the Deschutes County Group Medical Plan, so separate plan. And it is same idea, that it's the two thousand twenty plan year, and this would, this will be the plan document that is used to then determine claims payments and covered benefits or excluded benefits for those covered under the plan. And to, same process as we used on the dental plan, as Commissioner DeBon pointed out, is that changes were brought in when we renew, when we look at renewing the plan, so it would have been last, I think, October, November.
It's October.
October, and the, in a work session, and the Board reviewed and approved the changes to the plan with some adjustments. Those have been incorporated into the plan document as well as a few language changes consistent with either best practices or state or legal changes as well.
And this is an opportunity to reach out and say thanks to our Eback system, so Employee Benefits Advisory Committee, represented groups, management, HR staff, the professionals working on this all the time. We've got a great culture of partnership there. We're representing COIC employees also that are covered under this program. So there's a big picture of everybody working together, a long history of this plan in place.
Yes, I agree.
And one thing I was happy that we added was the Vision hardware, where it's no charge up to two hundred and fifty dollars for Vision, for glasses, contacts, and then it's, then it's your responsibility. So I thought there was a bit of confusion prior, so I was, you know, at least it's really clear now what people can expect of our plan.
And how many years is the deductible been at the levels they're at now?
I'm not sure off the top of my head, I could get that.
Probably, an estimate is probably eight years. Before, before the twenty-five dollars, it was fifteen dollars. Also, that same time, we made other changes. At the time, there was a less deductible to go to the emergency room, so we...
That's a co-pay that's twenty-five.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Have both been stable for eight years? Deductibles also?
I'm not sure. Yeah, I don't know if the, I can't remember when the deductibles changed, but we can look, we could look that up.
Well, I like that we get to, you know, go through it and comment on it, ask any questions we have. We have had a work session on it, but, so I'd move approval of the signature, County Administrator's Signature of Document Number two thousand twenty dash zero seven eight, approval of Deschutes County Group Medical Plan.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Good morning, distinguished members of the dais. For the record, Anthony Ragini, Senior Planner, Community Development Department. The item for your consideration or approval is Document Number two thousand twenty dash one three six. It's an improvement agreement associated with the West Gate subdivision. The Board may recall approving the plan amendment zone change for the West Side transect zone, and this was the first subdivision master plan approval that followed it. It's an eighty-five lot subdivision, and this improvement agreement is associated with the road and utility improvements for the subdivision. As I noted in the agenda, there's an irrevocable letter of credit that will cover one hundred and twenty percent of the remaining costs of the improvements, and so staff is available for questions. The applicant is also here in case the Board has any questions of the applicant.
Thank you.
So, yeah, this, this is, I guess, put it in context, this is just kind of the business case of moving forward, both parties agreeing to exit out.
Yes.
So the next step can be taken.
That's right. So the next step for the developer in this case is the approval of the final plat. But in order to move forward with final plat, they either have to construct all the improvements, in this case, roads, utilities, or secure them, in this case, with an irrevocable letter of credit. So the applicant, in this case, as I note, they're already in the middle of construction of a lot of the improvements that are necessary for the subdivision. And so, again, the ILOC is just to cover the remainder of the improvements that the applicant proposes to construct. But this is all necessary as part of the final plat approval process.
So I, my question was that I didn't understand why, so they've done the first part of the work already, we just paid for it, and then what's, what, again, is the ILOC? Why is it you get to a certain level and then you have to have a letter of credit and improvement agreement, or why? It seems like the improvement agreement would have been done, I don't know, I don't understand what the connection is.
So the, in our code for the, for subdivisions, in order to get final plat approval, which you get to plat your lots, and now the lots are whole and you can begin to sell them, you have to do one of two things. You either construct all of the improvements prior to final plat, or you bond or ILOC or some other security, sometimes it's cash, for the improvements, and we hold that, the county does, in case the developer doesn't come through and complete all the improvements, we take that security and then go build it, essentially.
We do it.
Yes. That's not happening.
It never actually happened in the world.
Exactly. And again, the applicant's here, and they can speak to their, as we speak, they're, they're in the middle of construction, and they're even completing more of the improvements as we go through the final plat process.
What, so really, they could have done an ILOC from the very beginning before they did any improvements, so they just...
Absolutely.
At this point, they've come and said, we want to, it sounds like they want to be able to start looking at selling lots, they've got enough showing or whatever to...
Exactly.
Do that.
Mm-hmm.
I had a question about this subdivision itself, maybe the developer could, I had a couple of questions, because we haven't had any, they haven't been here since we approved the transect decision, and so I was kind of curious.
Welcome.
Hi, everybody. I'm Kevin Spencer.
Hi, Kevin.
For West Gate.
Yeah, good to see you. Well, the last time I was really involved with this was when we went out and toured the land and saw kind of the layout. I was just wondering if this was, I think I read this was eighty-six lots now?
Eighty-five lots.
Eighty-five. And is that what you've had in mind all along, was eighty-five?
We actually were approved for a hundred lots.
I was thinking.
And so we reduced it to eighty-five, just fed on the parcels better.
Okay.
We had a minimum of two and a half acre parcels, and we, you guys remember, it's been, we put a fire, no build zone for the fire protection, then we gave forty acres away for conservation easement. And so by the time we took those components out of the equation, it didn't really leave us enough two and a half acre parcels to create more than eighty-five, so that's why we ended up at eighty-five.
And I see some of them go up, some of the acres go up to four acres, or some of the lots go up to four acre lots?
Along the edge of the boundary to Chevalin Park, which was kind of an important end group in general, to protect the park corridor, those lots are larger, and they include the property where it's no build zone. So the property that is in the no build zone is being included in those parcels just because they get to own it, but the owners can't build on it. It's a segregated fire protection row.
So you're saying the red line, then, is they own it?
But they can't build on it.
They can't do anything?
They can, they can, well, anything is a question. They can go non-fire, they can put like payovers on it, but they can't go vertical and build a building or a structure. As long as it's, as long as it goes through the HOA and it's a non-combustible component, then that's fine, but they can't go vertical and build their houses on it.
So a clear definition upfront that will be negotiated by the HOA for the rest of time, probably, but yeah.
Well, you guys...
The intention is there.
You have to appreciate that Land Watch has been involved with this in a really productive and positive way, and we've accommodated each other quite well.
Right, yeah.
Which is, which is, which is something.
So will the roads, so are the roads in here, are private roads in?
They're private roads, private roads until McLean actually goes through the property from McLean to State Step, and you know, Brooks Resources to do the development. I'm going to boldly say I think that's in phase eleven for them, which is going to be a few years' fill, so, so at that time, and which time the actual McLean Drive...
And so by the time we took those components out of the equation, it didn't really leave us enough two and a half acre parcels to create more than 85. So that's why we ended up at 85.
And I see some of them go up, some of the acres go up to four acres, or some of the lots go up to four acre lots?
Along the edge of the boundary to, to Chevalin Park, which was kind of an important end group in general, to protect the park corridor, those lots are larger. And they include the property where it's no build zone. So the property that is in the no build zone is being included in those parcels just because they get to own it, but the owners can't build on it. It's a segregated fire protection row.
So you're saying the red line, then, is they own it?
But they can't build on it.
They can't do anything?
They can, they can, well, anything is a question. They can go non-fire, they can put like payovers on it, but they can't go vertical and build a, build a building or a structure. As long as it's, as long as it goes through the HOA and it's a non-combustible component, then that's fine, but they can't go vertical and build their houses on it.
So a clear definition upfront that will be negotiated by the HOA for the rest of time, probably. But, yeah.
Well, you guys
The intention is there.
You have to appreciate that Land Watch has been involved with this in a really productive and positive way, and we've accommodated each other quite well.
Right, yeah.
Which is, which is, which is something.
So will the roads, so are the roads in here, are private roads in?
They're private roads, private roads until McLean actually goes through the property from McLean to State Step. And, you know, Brooks Resources do the development. I'm going to boldly say I think that's in Phase 11 for them, which is going to be a few years, Phil. So, so at that time, and which time the actual McLean Drive turns into State Step Drive and actually gets connected to their infrastructure, then the county has, as they're going to take, they're going to take McLean Road and put it into a county road. But until that time, if connections there, it actually is a private road. That makes sense.
So one of the things, I know when we were kind of negotiating the final, or negotiating right, we were creating the final details of our decision to approve the transect concept. I remember talking about the issue of access from people to the Chevalin Park through this area, so it's not a cutoff. And then also the issue of parking. And there was language in the final decision saying that there would be, I see a yellow line up at the top of the subdivision that looks like maybe it's a trail or something, but I don't see any, any trails where people can actually get down to Chevalin Park. And I was, I was hope that that would be true. I always thought that if there was a, you know, this was taken out of potential urban property, developed this, you know, really a higher-end neighborhood with more space.
So Phil, so you know, is that that trail isn't indicated on the sheet, but there is a trail down to the park. So
Whereabouts is it?
It's, you know, see where the yellow line is for, it says natural area there?
Yes.
Right there, there's a trail that's designated through the conservation area that goes down to the park. It's just not shown here. So the Parks and Rec, you know, we worked with Parks and Rec for almost a year and a half while this went through the process. And so we'll actually connect up to Discovery Park, goes through, hits the yellow line. The yellow line actually indicates non-paved paths, Phil. So, so then it hits the street sections. And as you guys know, through the process, the, what came through our approval is we had to widen our roads and include more trails, paved trails. So that connects up to a paved trail, like matches Military Farm. And it follows all the way through McLean Drive, and then it hooks over to the, again, yellow line, which represents a natural trail, which is not hard-surfaced. It actually goes down to that 8.2 acres of property that we gave away, or intended to give away to the Parks District when we get that all finished up. Then that trail goes to a non-service trail down to the Chevalin Park. It's just not indicated on this map. So there is connectivity, and you know that the Parks and us work really well together with, and we negotiated that spot with Land Watch. Everybody agreed that that was the best location. In fact, if you went out there today and you and I were out there, Phil, that's already being used for a trail, even though it's private property. So that's, all we're going to do is widen it and put a soft surface on it.
Great.
Thank you.
So I have a question.
I just wanted to ask, since you were back and, you know, I hadn't been out there, so.
You wouldn't believe all the roads are in. If you guys went out there today, and Anthony's absolutely right, the roads are in, the water line was already proved by the city, they've been in, it's, you know, they've got a third of the water line already installed. Roads are going really well, the weather's been really great for us this year, so good for us. And the purpose of requesting what we're doing today is strictly because we bond and then we sell the lots. But through the process, it's been a little while, and so we're halfway done already. Well, not quite halfway, but pretty much halfway. And it's working well.
So is Road A, does it have a name, then?
Road A does have a name. All the, all the roads are named, that's Huntsman. And I'm sorry that it's not on the map there, but it's Huntsman. McLean, and all, all the roads are named, all the cul-de-sacs are named.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd move approval of document number 2020-136, improvement agreement for the Westgate subdivision.
And I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
Vote yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you.
Can't leave my phone. Nobody else.
Yes, we'll call you. Good morning. Okay. 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 Oh, you're speaking more now. Yes. I get no opportunity. Okay. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Tanya Saltzman, Associate Planner. This is the time and place set for a hearing on file number 24719000700TA concerning text amendments to allow employee housing in the Sun River Business Park zoning district. The Board of County Commissioners will hear oral testimony, receive written testimony, and consider the testimony submitted at this hearing. The hearing is also being taped. The board may make a decision on this matter today, continue the public hearing to a date certain, or leave the written record open for a specified period of time. The hearing will be conducted in the following order. Staff will give a report on this issue. We'll then open the hearing to all present and ask people to present testimony at one of the tables or at the podium. You can also provide the board with a copy of written testimony. Questions to and from the chair may be entertained at any time at the chair's discretion. Cross-examination of people testifying will not be allowed. However, if any person wishes to ask a question of another person during that person's testimony, please direct your question to the chair after being recognized. The chair is free to decide whether or not to ask such questions of the person testifying. Prior to the commencement of the hearing, any party may challenge the qualifications of any commissioner for conflict of interest. This challenge must, must be documented with specific reasons supported by facts. Should any commissioner be challenged, the member may disqualify him or herself, withdraw from the hearing, or make a statement on the record of their capacity to hear and decide this issue. At this time, do any members of the commission need to set forth any information that may be perceived, perceived as a conflict of interest?
Does any commissioner have anything to disclose? And if so, please state the nature of same and whether you can proceed.
I don't have any conflicts of interest. I am familiar with the project, know the proponents of the project. I've done a lot of building in Caldera Springs, which is near it and Sun River, so I understand the resorts fairly well. So, but no bias or conflict.
So just relationships in the community and history in Southern Deschutes County, but no conflicts perceived or direct?
I have no conflicts. I am familiar with the, the industry and the issues that they have personally.
Does any party wish to challenge any commissioner based on conflicts of interest?
Okay. As no challenge are presented, the hearing is now open. Staff will proceed with a brief report. Thank you, Tanya.
So a quick outline of the proposal. The proposal are text amendments to amend the Sun River Business Park Zone to allow employee housing as a permitted use. The proposed amendments define employee and employee housing structure. And it provides requirements for employee eligibility. And it provides parking requirements. A little bit of background about the Sun River Business Park. It's located at the southern end of the Sun River Urban Unincorporated Community, or UUC. It was originally established for light industrial uses, but over time, those uses shifted a little bit more towards commercial. It currently includes some storage, a brewery, as well as office space, some doctor's offices. I believe daycare has been recently added to permitted uses there as well. It's difficult to see on these very small screens, but this is a brief map of showing where this zone is. The map on the left shows the larger context of the Sun River to the north and west, and Caldera Springs and Crosswater to the south. And then on the right, it's just a little zoomed-in version of the Sun River Business Park zoning district. So as part of the proposal, the housing is designed to serve employees of Sun River, Caldera Springs, and Crosswater, essentially those within two miles from the border of the UUC. And I'll go into more detail about that in a moment, as well as employees of Mount Bachelor. According to the applicant's burden of proof, there's, can be as, as many as 1,000 peak summer employees and about 500 in the off-season. So these are seasonal employees. Often, they're coming from other places, other states, other regions, possibly overseas. It's, it's a quick need to, there's a lot of housing needs for a short amount of time, and they, it's not usually for the entire year. The employee housing structures that are outlined in these text amendments would be subject to Deschutes County Code Chapter 124 site plan review. So that's, at that point, when an applicant comes forward with an application, that's when the details of egress and parking and driveways and sort of the, the specific site details would come into play. And full disclosure, the applicant, which is Sun River Resort Limited Partnership, they own a three-and-a-quarter acre property in this zoning district. If these text amendments are approved, their intention is to apply to build employee housing structures. As far as transportation requirements, based on the information that was provided from the applicant's transportation consultant, the application complies with the TPR and has no significant effect. The study for transportation used the ITE category of off-campus housing, and it found that it would not generate any more trips than other existing uses that are currently in that business park. A planning commission hearing was held on November 12th, and that was continued to December 14th. At that time, the commissioners did vote, excuse me, they, they expressed some concerns about a few issues, which I'll briefly summarize here. Their first concern was about parking. Is there enough parking? What about the non-employees? And relating to non-employees, the original text amendments included a resort season and a non, and a non-resort season, essentially. This meant that during the non-resort season, there was an option, if the property owner couldn't fill the structure with employees, there would be an option to include non-employees. That has since been removed, but this was the, what was placed in front of the planning commission. So they did have concern about how many cars these potential non-employees could bring. They also had some concerns about enforcement. Who would be in charge of enforcing employee eligibility as just general site conditions, as well as site conditions? And finally, they had some minor concerns about, about compatibility, just the introduction of a new use into this business district, which does include a pretty wide variety of uses as, as it stands today. At the public hearing for the planning commission, there were eight written comments received, all of which were in support. They're listed here. During the hearing, three individuals provided oral testimony. In general, they supported the concept. They did have, they voiced some minor concerns about specific intersections and how that would affect traffic, as well as enforcement and parking. And finally, three additional written comments were received after the close of the public hearing with the planning commission in response to that vote, which I'll go into in a moment. And all three of those comments were in support of the amendments, and those have been included in the record. Owing to the concerns that the planning commission voiced, ultimately, a motion to recommend approval of these amendments as written failed, two to five. The commission, the planning commission generally expressed support for the concept, but to them, the devil was in the details, and they just wanted to see more things fleshed out a little bit more. So because of that, after that, the applicant worked with staff to try to address these planning commission concerns, as well as to make sure from a staff viewpoint that the course, the code was possible to administer in terms of just the technical way it's written. And the result was a revised set of amendments, and that's what's before the board today. And I'll just go over a brief summary of those applicant revisions. The biggest change was the definition of, definition of employee. That was narrowed considerably. Now it is defined as a person who earns a living by working in the hospitality, food and beverage, outdoor recreation, or tourism industry, in or within two miles of the Sun River unincorporated community boundary, or out Mount, at Mount Bachelor Ski and Summer Resort. The previous definition included those within 20 air miles of the housing unit. The new amendments, the revisions, eliminated those seasonal definitions that I referred to before, and with it, the option of non-employees utilizing housing during the off-season. So the result is it's the same all throughout the year, it's only for employees and their families. This simplified the amendments a great deal. And finally, the revised amendments changed the parking requirements to be one vehicular parking space per three beds. Previously, it was one space per six beds. For phased projects, parking has the possibility of being reduced to no fewer than one space per six beds if the applicant can demonstrate during the site plan review process, through a study, utilization study, that sort of thing, that this will continue to provide enough parking. And the applicant respectfully requests adoption by emergency. In order to initiate the site plan review process, there is a timeline associated with these text amendments. If they do go through, the applicant would then submit an application for site plan review, and there is a construction and permitting timeline associated with that. And their goal is to provide housing for the 2021 resort season. And that's the summary of the proposal. The applicants are here to provide testimony as well. After that, there's three options to move forward. Continue the hearing to a date certain, close the hearing and leave the written record open to a date certain, or close the hearing and commence deliberations. And with that, I will sit down and answer any questions and provide the applicant with some time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tanya. I would just like to ask, how much time do you think you would need?
Probably 15 minutes.
Okay. No, that's
I think that, that would include question time as well.
Okay, all right.
Good morning, Commissioners. Steve Holtberg. For the record, I'm here with Tom O'Shea. We're just going to spend a few minutes talking about the proposal. Tom will spend a few minutes talking about the need for employee housing. And then, of course, we're here to answer any questions that you may have. I wanted to first thank Tanya for all her work on this and her presentation today. I think that really summarized what we're trying to accomplish here. You know, the, the planning commission, I think, was very supportive. I think every member of the planning commission was very supportive of the concept. But they were concerned with the prior version of the text amendment, which allowed for off-season rentals, and then the parking issues that might be associated with those. And so we addressed those, those concerns in a couple of ways. We more than doubled the parking. And I think most importantly, we have limited the ability to rent these units solely to employees. So you have to be an employee to rent one of these, one of these units. And along with that, we limited the geographic area to basically the Sun River area, including Crosswater and Caldera Springs. And to the extent that there is some agreement with Mount Bachelor, Mount Bachelor employees could possibly be included in that as well. And that is to address sort of the off-season needs, because the summer season is opposite, obviously, of Mount Bachelor's winter season. So those are really the changes that we have proposed, and I think, you know, we have addressed all of the concerns that the planning commission members raised. And again, happy to answer any questions. And perhaps Tom can talk a bit more about the need for it and why we're here before you today.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I'll talk briefly about just the business need and how we came to this decision to request the change and to build, potentially build associate or employee housing. But I came here in 2008, which was timing, probably wasn't the best in our industry. We all remember what happened in '08 and '09. And when we would do a job fair, we'd have 250 people lining up looking for a job. With 16% unemployment in Deschutes County, or something like that. Now, fast forward, and about five years ago, we started to see compression in the market, especially on the housing side. Certainly compression in the labor market, significant compression, to whereby, if you were to ask me about staffing last year, at any given day, we were in the high season of 40 to 50 employees short trying to run our business. When I came here, once the, the economy went into recession, we canceled all overseas hiring because we felt that any jobs that were available, we want to make sure that local people had those jobs and those opportunities. However, as the economy recovered and we, we got to a situation where we'd been growing as fast as it is, and more restaurants and hotels, and try and get a reservation in a restaurant in Bend these days, if you don't book one week out. So five years ago, we started to get back, we started to get into what the rental housing market, so that we could provide housing for either college students, interns, and overseas employees on a J-1 program. When you go to a college campus, the first question that you're asked is, do you provide housing? And if the answer is no, or if you fail to answer with a real positive yes, they're gone to the next company, because they're not going to come and work here for three months. They don't have a place to live. So we got into the housing market, and, and I'll share with you the economics of it. I mean, our request to do housing is not a, a business transaction from the standpoint of a revenue stream. This is subsidized housing. We are subsidizing up to 70% of the cost. And let me put that into real numbers for you. Last year, and when we say high season, we traditionally say Memorial Day to Labor Day. You could actually compress it even more. It's really when school's out until school's going back. You could really say mid-June to the third week of August, quite frankly. But we bring people in, we have to train and whatever. So we're starting to bring people in, in April. But last year, we spent approximately $450,000 for housing. That's 25 houses. That's 25 houses. So if you average that, it's $75,000 a month, or approximate cost of $3,000 a month for a house. So we are taking those houses out of the market, which is adding further pressure to anyone trying to rent a house. With how expensive Bend is, you're seeing a migration south of people, they're going where the jobs are. We will hire somewhere between 500 and 600 people in the next two months. We do that every year. And of that 600, about 130 of them will come, will be from out of state. We have a chronic need for housing. It's really an issue of can we, can we serve our customers? Can we grow our business? The good news is that our business is growing. I mean, it's a, I mean, the resort's doing really well. I mean, it's vital to South County. I mean, Sun River Resort, though a private industry, is really the, sort of, is really the pulse of what happens in that community, for all of you that know that. So the cost is significant. This year, it'll probably be over a half million dollars, and that's just not sustainable by any standard. That means we will be subsidizing somewhere in the region of $350,000 for an essence a five-month period. That's just not sustainable. So it's really not about whether or not we're going to rent units to individuals. You're not going to find an ad on Craigslist from Sun River Resort saying rooms for rent. That's not going, you're not going to see that. This is strictly to allow us to run our business, to bring in folks from overseas, and some of our employees will stay overseas, employees will stay year-round. When we bring in culinary students from, whether it's from India or the Philippines, which we've done, and will continue to, they are on a one-year credential, quite frankly. They are working with us for a year, and they're in culinary school or hotel school from their home country. So those are really the, the social impacts are, you know, as I said, we will continue to need more houses. The more houses we are renting, the less houses are available to rent. And, you know, obviously, it's known that it's a supply and demand issue now, so, I mean, when you think of the, and we pay our rents in advance, so it's not a matter of paying monthly rent. If I'm renting your house for six months, I send you a check for six months of rent in advance. That's how competitive it's become. And so therefore, just the impacts to the rental market, the impacts to our ability to actually run our business is significant, so I really appreciate you, or appreciate having the time to explain that to you. Thank you.
So you're actually, you have to rent then the house for that, for your employees for six months then, in order to secure that?
Yes, in some case, we rent for a year just to get the house.
Just to get it?
Yeah. We're fully responsible for, the contract is with us, the employee pays a small portion of it, we subsidize about 70% of it.
70%? Okay. Well, you run a, you know, a fabulous resort in Deschutes County. You were one of the very first, and you're still, you know, you're at the top, so, you know, we see it.
I mean, we are getting ready to invest just under $40 million into our facility in the next three years, guest renovations, aquatic facilities, everything. I mean, that's a great investment, but I then need, I need staff to be able to monetize that investment, otherwise, it's difficult. People want, when they come to dinner, they expect to have immediate service right away, and it's, it's great, I mean, Central Oregon is growing, I mean, it's at all levels, and it's great to see that, but staffing is going to continue, staffing and housing will continue to be, from our perspective, our biggest challenge.
You're doing a great job of defining the situation and, you know, the urgency of it. So, you know, there's a request for an emergency clause, and I think you did make a great case on that just now. One of the thoughts is, what does the commute look like without a vehicle? I mean, the bicycle, walking, vans, you know, what is that kind of...
That's a really great question, because one of the things that's attractive to the college students is they want to live in a social environment. So, and right now, we have homes all over the place, and we'll pick them up if need be, or if it's summertime, if they have, they all have bicycles. But to have the ability to be in the business park and meet your buddies after work, and just walk across, walk over under the bridge, and you're in the village, and, and those employees, by the way, also work for all the businesses in Sun River. They don't, we bring them in, we take the cost, and we house them, but they're, they're not, they're also allowed to work in other places. You might, you serve breakfast at Carson's, and then you'll see them in the country store later. So basically, it's, so that's a great question, because that is an important part, especially with college students. They want to have that social experience, and they have the ability to meet after work for a burger or a pizza, whatever else. So it's, that's, that's a really key, that's a very good question.
Great, thank you.
So I'm supportive, as I've said before, of the concept very much. I really appreciate your, I mean, I know you're doing it out of your own need, because it makes a lot of sense business-wise to have one place rather than 25 houses. The shortage of housing of any kind of rentals is extreme in Deschutes County anyway, in that region. My, so I'm supportive of the concept and like to find a way to get this done. My concerns are, there was things that surprised me in the definitions, and I don't know if we created the definitions or we and you created the definitions, but one was that, I've always imagined this as kind of a dormitory, like you're describing it, for summer workers. But the definitions really is a worker with their spouse and children, so you, how many children? Can any, you know, can you have, are there limits? So who creates it? I'm not, and I'm, I've got kind of my lawyer hat on here about all the, how does these things really get developed in reality? And if you're not, you know, in five years, it's still there, and so, and it's duplicable, other people could do it if it's a text amendment. So looking at kind of the long term. So one was families, that seem to be a different work, worker than you're describing to us when you talk about college students or foreign people. It seems like they're more just single individuals. That's one. Two, and this is probably even bigger, is with anybody that works within two miles that works in the hospitality, food and beverage, outdoor recreation, and tourism industries. So first, it's not just your employees, it's anybody that works in that area. First, do you work in that area? So you, so that, and then you get in these industries, so does hospitality include not just Sun River Resorts hospitality people, but the people that work for rental, other home rental agencies down there, property rental agencies? Do those include the cleaning people that work? Do they get to apply at this, for these same positions? Food and beverage, is it, is it, is it the, every restaurant and every store, could a person that works in a store say he's in the food and beverage, or she is in the food and beverage industry? Or people that deliver food and beverages, are they? And I'll just lay it out and kind of tell you that my concern. Outdoor industry, so within two miles, will that include the river guides? Does it include the people that rent the kayaks and canoes? Does it improve, that aren't resort-related? The bike shops in their, in, you know, do all of those people? And then outdoor recreation, does it include the golf maintenance people at the resort, which I don't know if you hire for that or not? Or golf shop, is it? And then tourism, is it all the people that work at Kova? It's a tourism industry, the, any of the, you know, I didn't even throw breweries into the food and beverage. So to me, it seems like you're creating community housing, not just Sun River Resort, and there may be a need for community housing. I'm not, I think it's, I guess the reason I'm asking is because I think it's doable, and then you say you're actually subsidizing it. Well, how much, how do you determine rates if you have, like you used to have for employees, you have 250 people waiting for rooms? How do you decide rates? How do you decide priorities? And that, so that all has to do with the definition, it's kind of broad, so if you could just address those three parts that I mentioned, which is the families, the two-mile radius, and then the specific types of employees, which is, you know, what we see in land use is people come in and, well, I fit under this rule because of this word, and that's what we'll, so...
Certainly.
Yeah, it's kind of the big issue to me.
Commissioner Henderson, in response to your questions and issues, very valid. And to your first question, who wrote the definitions? It was largely on me to put those together, because we proposed the text amendment. With respect to families, that was, in my mind, a matter of discrimination, not being able to discriminate against someone who has a family.
Well, don't colleges discriminate? I mean, if you go to a college dorm, can you bring your family with you? I mean, I don't know now, but maybe you can.
I, I don't know. That was the reason for it. I think the likelihood is very low that it's going to be families, based on the employees that the resort actually employs.
But what about all those other businesses?
I'm going to get to all those points. So the two miles, originally, we had it a much broader geographic area, it was 20 miles.
Right.
And some of your planning staff outlined some of the concerns with that, and that was actually a very helpful process to go through with your staff, because we wrote it based on what we thought might work. Planning staff looked at it as, well, how is this actually going to work when it comes through? And so we made a lot of changes based on those comments. The two-mile radius is necessary so we can include Caldera Springs and Crosswater. We could limit that to a mile if we wanted to. I just, we put in two miles to make sure we captured the entire geographic distance. That was the reason for that. And you are correct, Commissioner Henderson, that the two-mile radius and the definition of an employee being one who is included in the hospitality, tourism industry, all that, could include a raft guide who lives within two miles. That's certainly not the intent of the resort to open this up to other employees, largely because of landlord-tenant law. The last thing the resort wants to have happen is they have a few employees in there, and now they don't want to leave, and it's now the summer season, and they've got to try to evict them. The last thing they really want to do is to have those kind of employees or residents in there. I think there is a way to short-circuit all of this, because as we've testified both here and at the planning commission, this is really intended so the resort can operate its business, so it has a place for its employees. What we think, an easy short-circuit to this and a resolution of, I think, all of your issues, would be that in order to qualify as a employee housing structure, it has to be owned by an employer in the community. So it's not that a person who has a piece of property in the business park can throw up a dorm and just rent it to whoever they want, right? If that's what you're trying to get to, it has to be owned by an actual employer in the district. I think that addresses a lot of those concerns.
Well, so the person that owns Sun River Brewing is an employer, they could, right next to this facility, they could buy a parcel and put up another housing. I don't know what's profitable. I mean, I don't know much about the economics. Well, but I, but, but I don't know that, because it isn't if you're subsidizing it, but if you're, if you end up, if within the category is created, and then people see it as a way to put multifamily units essentially, is what we're talking about here, you know, maybe it is. I mean, I don't know that, but my point is that I don't know if, there are employers that could become landlords in the housing business. I don't know if they would ever want to do it, but I'm just bringing that up. But my other thing that's bigger really is, I mean, that's the precedence value of what, what else could happen besides this. And I realize there's not lots of parcels, but people do tear down things and build new businesses. But the definition of kind of anybody that's in these industries in that whole geographic area, why, why are they included in the definition? Why isn't it just the Sun River, you know, they work for the resort or its affiliates or something? And, I mean, why would you want to get open up to all that, I guess is what.
Well, county council can opine on this as well, but I'm not sure that we can through a text amendment, limit it, limit the ability to one private property owner or one corporate entity. That seems to me to be a little bit risky to name Sun River Resort as the only one that could do this. That's why I think if you limit it to an actual employer, it has to be operated, owned and operated by an actual employer, you are greatly reducing that risk. And so, yes, you are correct, Sun River Brewing could buy a parcel and rent to employees.
Or they could...
I don't know if that's a bad, a bad result.
No, I get that. It's whether Sun River Brewing, I'm picking them, but they happen to be in that area, and they have employees right next door, they could want to put 10 of their employees in there year-round in this housing, because that would be a great benefit, and they might even subsidize it. They might even give you 500 a month to do it, because they have the same, it's part of the, part of people's compensation back. I mean, there's all sorts of things, if it becomes a broad, anyone within two, two miles can live there, there's all sorts of things we could do with that, and that's like with all these definitions, and I just, that's what I'm not sure about, I guess.
Just a couple of points I want to make. The nature of our business, and what I'm, what I'm referring to here is the seasonality. The nature of our business makes it very, very difficult for us to consider renting these units to anybody other than our employees, for the very reason that Council Steve just said. We have to be able to guarantee housing for, to whatever number of people, 100, 150 people on a certain date. If we have other people in there and there's any delay at all, we have a massive problem on our hands. So really, this is for, the business purpose is for employee housing, so we can run our business. We're not in, we do not want to be a landlord, we do not want to be renting individually, and then whatever language needs to be in the proposal that supports that, that's fine. This is really a business decision. There's a chronic problem for housing, you already know that. I mean, it's, it's not going to change, and the, you know, decisions that were made many, many years ago, whether it's the ability to rent your, your home overnight through Airbnb, all these things have now had consequences. There is a migration south for, for individuals who can't afford to live in Bend. We are taking houses out of the market at a significant above-market cost. So I think we really need to figure out a way to make this work, because it's not going to go away, and next year, I'll be looking for 30 houses. And there's a timeframe here where I want to get this done. You know, it's not going to be something that we're going to be looking at two years from now, because we will have moved on to something else. This is some, this is pretty critical to us in our business. It's, we're not in this to make it a, it's not a revenue stream, it's strictly overhead costs for us, and, but when you're spending $500,000 a year, I would rather build it and have it, and create a better environment for our employees, make it the social experience that I'm talking about, that allows us to continue to grow our business and provide jobs for these folks that are working at the resort.
So, yeah, this could go a whole bunch of ways. I'm just thinking of a big business cycle, like we saw 2008, '09. I mean, I was just thinking through the process of what would that look like? You know, if things slowed way down, probably still, I don't, I guess I don't want to put words in your mouth, I was starting to conclude, but yeah, what would it look, what would it look like if it was way down?
But I can respond to that.
Yeah, well, I was going to respond, but please do.
I told you, we're getting ready to invest close to $40 million into a facility. A huge part of that is an aquatic facility. If the business turns down, I won't have as many people in that facility as I would have in a high sea. But we don't make decisions in the, in the short term. We make decisions for the overall, long-term future of tourism in Central Oregon. You're not going to see a reduction in people coming here. So, I mean, obviously, in '08 and '09, those years shortly thereafter, we spent most of our capital improvements in those years, because we knew that the economy was going to come back. I mean, we're a long-term operator in Sun River, you know that.
Even if it was a, yeah, so as I say, I started leaning right into that. Even if it was a construction crew or a minimal workforce, it would still be an asset to have housing opportunity, and then if the economy slows way down, it'd be a compensation that people will want and need anyways, you know, somewhere to live.
And one, at one point that we talked about, you know, as far as employees and their families, we don't provide family housing. Now, if, if two people came together and they're working, we are not in the family housing there. We do not provide family housing. We provide housing, even currently, to people who work for us. We're not in the family housing, we do not do that.
So another thought is, this is kind of that sub-subzone, you know, it's a rural commercial area named under its own special thing, so there's, this is just a one-zone discussion. Can you talk about utilities, you know, just kind of the big picture about utilities and that? Because that's always been, you know, water and sewer.
Water and sewer, as far as I'm aware, water will be provided by Sun River Water and Environmental, both of which have capacity to serve the business park. Electricity will be provided by, I'm not even sure, Central...
Yeah, but on, but just to qualify that further, but to qualify that further, I mean, they'll be either flushing the toilet here, or they'll be flushing it someplace else. They're not, by not doing this doesn't mean these folks are not coming to some...
My goal, yeah, it is on a managed sewer system, I guess.
Yes, it is. Yes, it's provided by, as everybody else.
And the other thing to consider is, in the downturn, our tourist numbers never really went that far down. If you look at the chart, it wasn't like this really big dip, because people can still get here so easily. A lot of people still vacationed, you know. It might have been a bit slower, but, you know, it could have been a lot slower with the economy.
That is correct.
So I think we have to consider that, and it's always a need for your industries. You have to have people that are part of your team, and, you know, they need to do a really good job. And if they don't know where they're, you know, if they're living like five miles away, it's harder.
And that's a very true statement. There are three, two components there, as you have vacation rentals, tourism. People came, they just paid less.
Right.
So they negotiated better.
It was on sale.
Yeah, on the corporate side, you know, they have the ability to cut training, whatever, so that side was affected. so that side was affected, but for the most part, people still came. They just, instead of paying $400 a night for a home, a vacation rental, they pay 300, but they're still going to come to Sun River. In fact, in a downturn, when you're not flying, sometimes you actually see it go the other way because instead of flying somewhere, you're going to drive to Sun River and you still have it, have a, have a great vacation that way. So it actually can work the other way on the, on the leisure or the tourism side.
I believe we saw those numbers, so it was, you know, we do live in, you do have one of the most beautiful places in our state.
Thank you.
In your backyard, so.
Commissioners, I know that there, I think there's at least one other person, maybe a couple that do want to speak. I also have some thoughts on how we can specifically address Commissioner Henderson's concerns that we'd like to, I'd like to talk with Tom about for a minute or so and then get back to you if you don't mind.
That would be fine. Is that okay?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any testimony? I believe that could be...
What?
In a public hearing.
Yes, now...
If anybody who wants, else wants to testify.
Okay. If you do want to testify, please complete a blue form and it's now time, we will open the public hearing to our community. Is there anyone else? Nancy Gould?
I participate when I see topics that have community-wide significance and I think it's important to think about this text amendment in the construct of how that might be applied to industrial zones in other UUCs. And I know that's not what's on the table here, but in terms of thinking about the ramifications of this type of a text amendment across our county. I did not see a map included in the text amendment and so of most concern to me is that the borders of what we're talking about today be defined in this text amendment. And I actually had Tim Berg of GIS do a little map just to educate myself and I just wanted you as commissioners to get a chance to see that for what a two-mile radius from the Sun River UUC would look like. So I have one that shows the city limits of, or Deschutes River Woods on the southern end of Bend as the, in the northeast corner outside of this two-mile radius and then one that's zoomed in. They're the same map, it's just a different scale.
Great, thank you.
So I'd like to be clear that I am in favor of providing housing for people who work within our community. I think this text amendment needs a lot more review. As I mentioned, it doesn't actually describe the current UUC boundary of Sun River. It does not contain a map. And it doesn't identify the current Sun River Business Park Zone. I do think, after serving on Code Enforcement Committee, that the, another lens needs to be thought about, which is how does the county community development actually implement the intent based on the language that's there? So I don't know, for instance, how community development department would get employee records to know if a resident living in this dwelling or proposed dwelling actually is an employee or if that would be something that would be protected through private records. I do think we should have the possibility for resort employees who might not be 18 years old to be able to live in such a dormitory. And as written now, they'd have to be at least 18. I do think we need to think about if a family is living in this, what happens if their child turns 18? Does the whole employee housing disappear on them on that birthdate of their child? I do know that Mount Bachelor provides a one-time shuttle from the Sun River parking lot next to the bank at 7:00 in the morning and returns at 4:30 in the afternoon. That's just a wintertime schedule. So right now, there's no Mount Bachelor transit to Mount Bachelor in the summertime. So if we're creating employees for a Mount Bachelor destination, I think we need to be mindful that, we need to be mindful of the whole picture, which is the transportation network, so those employees can get there. In the code, there's reference to Mount Bachelor Winter and Summer Resort and there is no such business listed in our Secretary of State. So I know that Mount Bachelor, through Powder, owns Mount Bachelor and I know that Powder owns Sun Country Tours. So I get that they're trying to deal with summer and winter, I get that part, but I don't think the text amendment should be specific. If you're trying to refer to an employer, then you should actually refer to that so that your code enforcement can actually verify that and, and have it sink in. I appreciate the changes in the text amendment and I think some of this is improved, I think some of this still needs more thought. For instance, one vehicle for three beds, one bicycle for two beds, does the other person walk? So I suggest bicycle parking for every bed. That's easy. And one vehicle for three beds, in terms of parking. I would completely strike the phasing of the parking as it just gets into a tracking burden on CDD. And I think the CET bus is planning to do some changes and, and make a stop in the future in Sun River, but that's not happening today. So for a number of people who may feel that Bend is the hub versus Sun River, the question is how might they get there? So there also are some code number correlations. There isn't 18.108.110A9E anymore. That referred to your previous text. So I think we need to strike that out of G1. And I'm just thinking about somebody who might work at the Deschutes National Forest. Are they eligible? That's within two miles. Somebody who works at the Newberry Monument, are they eligible? Somebody who works in the new pot shop down the way at the commercial area of Spring River, is that included? And I do agree, it gets really, it gets really difficult to put a nice ring around. So why don't we put a ring around the Sun River UUC? Because that's where your housing is located and the idea is that you're asking people not to be a burden on the transportation system, so why make it any larger on that ring? And one of the things I did notice in the industrial park...
Nancy, do you, do you want to wrap up?
Yes, I will.
You can submit your...
The deed restricted through condominium appointment of the Powder Corp. housing that's in the industrial land has a deed, has ownership caveats because they're condominiums. And so the question is, moving forward, if we're trying to create this type of employee housing stock, it should be deed restricted somehow. And I think if it's not, then the whole dormitory could be sold off and it's really out of the purview of Deschutes County. So by deed restricting it somehow, I don't know exactly how, then you're able to add and build inventory to the stock. As you mentioned, the resort's trying to grow, so their housing needs for their employees are going to continue to grow. So we need to start with a baseline that could be quantified. So those are a couple of my thoughts and I want to give you the corporation's registry for Mount Bachelor LLC and then also Sun Country Tours, Inc. Sun Country Tours has a Bend-based office and supplies river rafting to places like the Umquah and the Mackenzie. And so it's quite a regional recreation-oriented business, not just along the Deschutes River. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wanted to provide testimony at this time? Did you want to come up and clarify?
Just make one really quick note to the point of the, the misnumbering. It's, that was a very good catch, I appreciate that. It, we did correct that. Nancy, you might have downloaded it in that five-minute window before we caught it, so it should, you should have an updated version with the proper numbering. If not, I can provide that to you.
Thank you.
Good morning again, Steve Holtberg for the record. In terms of trying to narrow some of the issues here, Commissioner Henderson, you raised excellent points. And it's one of those things where when you're drafting code, you don't get to think really about all the implications of it. And so that's on me. But I think we have some solutions for you. One is that we restrict employee housing, that it has to be owned and operated by an actual employer in the area. It is limited solely to employees of that employer. And if that employer wants to, in this case, rent to Mount Bachelor, they have to have an agreement with Mount Bachelor to do so. So it's not Sun River Resort advertising to Mount Bachelor employees, there has to be a formal agreement between the two parties. So I think that addresses your concern, Commissioner Henderson, about a raft guide a mile and three-quarters away. Yes, they're an employee, but they're not going to be eligible unless there is an agreement between the two employers to provide housing.
Which, yeah, so that's getting to some of what, yeah, I'm talking about. I guess, yeah, I guess what I'm wondering about is if we get, you actually have more demand than you have facility and that's, I know that sounds crazy at this point, but I'm not sure it is because you could make agreements with a variety of employers. I mean, it could be the bike shop and the, could, and it could be the store or whatever it, you know, there's, there's the things on Past Harper Bridge there. I mean, so that's, so maybe some new language we should just get, I would think we'd get that and look at it, yeah, see what that does. The employer owning the employee housing, you know, does have the spirit of what we're, you know, promoting here, which is good. I like that.
So, yeah, I'm supportive of narrowing it just that little bit for employee, employer-owned, just for the clarity of it, because I do think that if, if it's not contained in that fashion, we could, there could be a cookie cutter model here that gets, that is unintended. So, yeah, maybe closing that loop would be appropriate. Also, could you say some words about the phased parking? So there is, you know, one, one spot for six beds as the phase happens? Could you just explain the concept there?
Yeah, so we did an analysis when we were coming up with the parking requirements for the facility and I, I may get this wrong, but I think it was that one out of every 10 or 12 employees actually had a car. And so they've done that, that work of finding out who actually brings a car. And so we based the initial numbers on that, reduced down then to meet the county's dormitory parking requirements, which is one for every six. That was still a concern, so we doubled the parking again and so it's one to three. We think that is well overparked. That's just a, in my mind, it is a waste of space and asphalt providing excess parking. So the phased approach allows us to do something to say, okay, we're going to put in 100 units and then we're going to, we're going to do a, an evaluation and show you how much of that is actually being used during the year. And so if we can come in with phase two and say, look, we've been at 30% utilization for two years now, we don't need, you know, to double the parking, let's limit what, with what we have.
So it's a one-time kind of prove that the other, that six would be appropriate opposed to three?
Absolutely.
Because that was my thought, you know, it, it, these, these follow-up items for our community development or, or who, who follows up on it to make the decision is always the tricky part.
And that would be done through the site plan application so that the, the baseline is one spot for every three. And then we would have to have our, we would have to demonstrate to the county that we don't need that much parking and that, I mean, the county already has that right now in its code. The county has parking standards for many, many things and then if you don't fit into one of those many, many things, you have to explain how much parking you need and make a demonstration of that. And that's basically where we would be.
Did you, it came up the issue of enforcement of the, the new text amendment in terms of rentals. Do you, I kind of was wondering how that would, how you'd foresee that happening? Is there any, I don't know, Nick may want to talk also from this county side, what would we do? I mean, we're not in the business of monitoring rentals any, either, I don't think, other places, so I don't even, I don't even know if that's a legitimate thing for us to be doing or a reasonable thing, but...
And that comes up, that came up in the Planning Commission, but that comes up really in almost anything that gets approved by a site plan. You are getting approved for a specific use and you are bound by those conditions in that approval. And yes, it is a matter of enforcement and it's a matter of, this county is a complaint-driven enforcement county. So yes, there would have to be a complaint, but this is no different than any other use that the county approves through site plan or just outright permitted use approvals. It's, the code applies, conditions of approval apply and you have to comply with those.
I agree.
So, good.
Thank you, Nick.
But, and so what I guess about practically, so it'd be like other code complaints, somebody would come in and say, well, I think there's somebody living in these units that's, works elsewhere, doesn't work, whatever. And then we go out and inspect like we do, or we inspect, I mean, we've never, it's not the same as, you know, inspecting the land for the rusty cars or, I don't know, whatever.
For the record, Nicola LeLac, Deschutes County Community Development Director. That's correct. So if we receive a complaint, the first thing we would do would be to reach out to the property owner, to the, to the resort and to ask, we have a complaint. We would conduct an investigation just like we would anything else. Can you substantiate that they have their employees living here? And we would, we would have that conversation and document it and if they said no or not, then we would work through a compliance process as we would with any other code enforcement case. And, and if, if they do comply and it was an unfounded complaint, then we would close the, we wouldn't pursue it further.
This could also be done through an enhanced condition of approval where during site plan approval, the county could say, please maintain records of all your employees, so if we do call you, you have them handy. I mean, it's a pretty simple thing to do through site plan approval.
It's the next step, yeah. So this is just a legislative step right now.
Exactly.
So you were talking 100 units? No, is that 100 units or 100 beds?
100 beds.
100 beds, okay. So you actually...
And I was just using a rough number there.
Right, I know. But, okay, so if you had 100 beds, you're going to...
But, okay, so if you had 100 beds, you're going to, right now with the one to three, you're going to have to have 33 parking spots? Even though historically speaking, it was one to 10 or one to 12? Just to really address that issue?
Correct.
Okay, you're going, yes.
Above and well above, we think, is necessary.
Exactly, from your history of having it.
And based on dormitory parking standards. I mean, the county's dormitory parking standards weren't pulled out of thin air. They're taken from, you know, studies across the country, and that's what they come up with.
One to six?
Yeah.
Okay.
I believe that.
You've worked a little bit on a phased development plan. What, do you have something in mind, would it be 100 beds? Is that kind of where you are now, or?
Probably more 130, because that's what we had last year. Obviously, we, I'd like to get this done and then not have to be subsidizing with additional housing. But the reality of it is, we will phase it at some level. But we, as I said earlier, we are 30 to 40 employees short, which would suggest that we need something more in the full, 170 to 180 beds. Let's say phase, let's say it's 130. Obviously, the math will, the numbers will determine the math on parking. I think it's parking that, for the most part, won't be used. But if that's the requirement, then I guess the need is so great that we'll do it.
What, I can't recall if you have an estimate of what kind of capital's involved in building a 130 bed?
Anywhere between four to five million. Yeah, I'm assuming somewhere in the 35,000 to 40,000 per bed. I'm not asking for a loan. Yet.
Not yet. A grant, how about a grant?
And I did want to respond to just a few of the issues that were raised and the other testimony that was received. One, that there is no map associated with the proposal. Well, there's not, because this is a text amendment. And I think the county's zoning map is the map that would apply, because the county zoning map shows where the Sun River Business Park is located and the boundaries of that. So we didn't think there was a need to include that in the context of a text amendment. In terms of, I think there were some concerns about enforcement, and I think we've addressed that through what I think could be either conditions of approval or just the county's code enforcement mechanisms. And lastly, on transportation, and I guess the related parking, we did do a full transportation planning rule analysis. And the business park has a wide variety of uses. Some of those are very high-trip generating uses, well above what we will produce here. And so what that shows is, based on a comparison to other uses allowed in the zone, we actually have far less transportation impacts than other uses that could be put into this spot. So it satisfies the transportation planning rule and also addresses the transportation issue. Moreover, as Tom and others have testified, a large bulk of the employees don't have cars. They're going to be riding bikes or using complimentary shuttle from the resort.
So you're saying things like the post office, the library, the Shell stations, those have more uses than this does? So you're not creating an...
They have more, they have more PM peak hour. That's the hour that we really, we look at for transportation purposes. They have more trip generation than does the dormitory.
So another concept, you know, short, is there any scenarios for short-term rentals or month-to-month leases in this? Or, it's more that kind of that three-month summer, but chunks of rental times?
Would the goal be to fill it over the winter then, or just wait for the Mount Bachelor people, or do you?
No, I'm really not looking to fill it over the winter, because as I said, we're going to have year-round use. We may have maybe 20, 25 individuals in there in the off-season. Our goal is to plan development within a culinary academy, some other business decisions that we're making to sort of, to drive Central Oregon's tourism to take the next step in things that I believe will be fundamentally important to tourism in Central Oregon. Having international students, I think, will be really good for the region. And they will all, it would make it easier if we have this housing. I honestly feel that being a landlord is not in our best interest. We are not doing this to be a landlord. We're doing this to run our business. If there was, when I initially started out on this, I said, you know, morally, it seems right that if you have, with the crunch you have on housing and people not having a place to live, having a building that you just winterized for the winter because you don't need it, just didn't seem right to me. But then as we got into the discussion of the complexities of taking it beyond employee housing, now I've sort of taken, taken some of that back and says, you know, why, what's our primary reason? Our primary reason to run our business is not to know whether or not to have occupancy in the off-season. It's expensive for us to run it in the off-season. And it's far less expensive just to decommission it and say we'll reopen it in April. But, so I don't see us at any level being a landlord. We do not want to be a landlord. And it would, we have never spoken in any great detail with Mount Bachelor about having an agreement. John McLeod and I have spoken about, you know, would this be something that your employees might have interest in? But it's never, we've never taken it beyond that. We keep saying Mount Bachelor, there may be no desire for Mount Bachelor, or whatever. And we would, as a business, we would have to look very carefully at that. Because again, we have to have those units available when we bring these folks in. We can't be in a situation where we have 20 individuals that are in the units, and we have 20 people waiting to move in. It's like double-selling your hotel room, that doesn't work. So basically, although sometimes I've found that people do that. But, so that's really the point I want to make, is that this is not a revenue stream for us. It's a subsidized housing for our employees. And that's really the main point. And then how do we do that with the text amendment where everybody feels comfortable? That's not going to turn into something, that are not going to be some unintended consequences down the road with some other developer. I understand that part.
So I was just looking at the two kind of offers owned by employer, an agreement with employers for offering that housing. I do like the idea of kind of going down that path. I don't know if you have proposed words or how mature that might be.
Commissioner, if I could, I might suggest those proposals are pretty substantial. You're not going to be able to deal with that today. At a minimum, you need to continue this hearing at least a week.
Well, that's, I mean, that's...
The applicant and staff can work on it. I'm going to, I just texted Adam and told him he's got a new assignment.
That's right where I was going, thinking, I'm trying to digest it.
And so he's going to be involved with this now as well. And I think we can probably, working with the applicant and planning staff, come up with something that hopefully addresses the concerns that have been articulated and bring that forth. And we can fast-track it, make every effort to just continue this hearing until next week.
Until next week.
I know the applicant wants to move as quickly as possible. But moving forward with substantial amendments today and closing and voting would create some procedural issues that I don't think would benefit anybody.
Yeah, not a problem. And I'm not even saying I'm specifically supportive. I'm trying to digest the concept, and it's really the unintended consequences, you know, the next step. If it was owned by somebody other than, you know, the entity making the application here right now, what does that mean? So that's the only thing, I'm thinking that through a little bit. So I'll acknowledge, I may not be supportive of even having to add anything.
To the extent that we can address unintended consequences, I think the better. It addresses neighbor concerns, Planning Commission concerns. And it certainly wasn't our intent to create some sort of new housing model. It was really to provide housing for employees.
We're the third-largest employer in the county, I might add. Yes. And, you know, and you've contributed a lot to our county. And I do know unintended consequences. A lot of times, things happen, and, you know, it is our job to be aware of that. But I, as far as parking goes, I know you've gone way over on the other side, so, yes.
And if, I mean, I don't know that it's the goal to limit another investment like this also. As in, if there was a second or a third one, and I'm just throwing, you know, what the scenario could be. I mean, it may be the right thing to be doing there, too. So I mean, I'm not going down the path of limit. I'm just trying to make sure we're providing what's intended.
Sure. And one last thing, that, just in terms of context, there are other residential uses immediately adjacent to the business park and the Powder, Mountain, Powder Village condominiums. And it's also, Ms. Gould testified that it's an industrial park. It's not an industrial park. This is not industrial land. It's the Sun River Business Park. It's a very big distinction between that and an industrial park.
Yep. Have you ever, one other question I had is, so we've talked about three parking spots, you know, versus six. Have you ever talked about four or five? Was there any reason those two were picked? I mean, half of the half.
Four does sound better.
Four sounds a lot better.
But we did, we did...
Well, it's a 30% increase.
We did think about that, and we, our firm belief is that this is going to be a phased project. And if we can make the showing at phase two that really one in five, or, you know, whatever that ratio is, that's fine. It addressed concerns of the Planning Commission, and it just made sense for us to go that route.
I really think one in six, if that's what a dormitory rating is, why would we go way below it and just add that? I mean, to me, it doesn't make logical business sense to go below our one in six.
But, and there's another, you can approach it in a different manner. You can make it a requirement that if one in three is not sufficient, that you add parking. As opposed to saying, let's add parking so that it just sits there idle for the next whatever number of years. We could, you could make it a condition that in the first year or two years, if it's, all of a sudden you're seeing parking out on the street, that we have, by definitive date, that we have to double the parking and that we allow enough land to do that. That to me, from a business perspective. But again, if you, the urgency is to get the housing.
Right.
If we have to, now if you said 10 times, that would be a problem. But at one in six, it quite frankly is way too much parking.
Well, we're all, you know, it's funny, because we're all familiar with parking lots that are way too big for things. And we're all ones that seem way too small, because they're always jammed up. So it's, you know, and we're, I guess we're trying to get it just right, not cause over-parking. But we, yeah, I think people, that was one of the oppositions of people, well, you don't want lots of cars on the streets, which it sounds like there won't be, so.
No, they won't.
Okay, well, we can talk about that, too, in terms of, you know, the next week or so. Okay.
And we will get amended text from our perspective in the next couple of days. You'll have a chance to review it, and we'll work staff to get whatever we need to do to make it work.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate the discussion. Thank you.
So Commissioner, to be clear then, the action of the board is to continue this public hearing until February 19th at 10:00 a.m. And staff working with the applicant will do everything we can to get the red line amendments posted as quickly as possible so folks can view those in advance of the hearing.
The deadline for packet upload, I believe, is Thursday at 5:00. We can do our best to get that, and there might...
It's due by Friday. I'd like to look at it as one member, just before we have a discussion again, we may be able to, there may be some...
So we'll certainly do our very best. I mean, my point is, it might not make it to the typical board upload, but we'll certainly make sure it's available on the CDD website.
Keep in mind, Monday's a holiday.
Monday is a holiday.
Right, yeah. So we may have to move a little on some of those timelines, but we can...
Well, we're acknowledging it here and now, yes.
Thank you, Tanya.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Appreciate it.
These are official maps.
Oh, good.
Here we go. Sure. Okay, so now it says we have lunch, right?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate it.
Samantha, would you go get us lunch, please? Do we have any other items?
Well, Commissioners, depending on your time availability, we had, I had several items.
Okay.
Also, as well, so it's your pleasure. We can either break for a while, or just do a few, or just hold off.
No, we have time now.
Yeah, I've got to go to that meeting in Redmond at 1:00 for the Deschutes Basin. Remember, we, so I won't be here after 12:30. We could do it now.
We could do it now.
Okay. Would you like me to plunge in, or if you want to do?
Please.
Okay. One item, Commissioner Derry, you had mentioned the AOC dues, if you want to discuss that now.
Oh, AOC dues, yes.
We're pulling out.
You still have an organization.
Okay.
We had a bitter battle at the, it wasn't really very bitter. There was more worried about it being bitter than was bitterness.
I know.
They thought the union, it was tearing apart the union. Nullification debates and...
Discussion about opposing the carbon bill was tabled, a motion was to table it, and that was supported by the body. So it was tabled at a February meeting for a 30-day session to bring it back a month from now.
And what good does that do?
It got tabled.
Well, the only, it was a huge advance from last year, when we couldn't even get a discussion. So we at least got to discuss it and the pros and cons, and I guess about the thing. You know, we don't gain anything by the tabling, really. I mean, it got it off the docket, so the leadership could feel confident that the organization wasn't threatened. But the new bill is probably going to just be decided by legislators anyway, without much impact from us.
No, they didn't like the emergency, so that was...
Well, but I did hear that, I asked somebody about, you know, I told them that we voted against the emergency clause, but they said, well, that, that had been offered to the Republican leadership, and that they didn't take that, because what would happen is the governor just delays in signing it so nobody can get a ballot measure up in time. So they don't think that.
Two steps to the, wow, I never knew that.
Well, that was something, that might be why we didn't have much opposition in that.
Well, people weren't thinking that deep into it, I don't think. They were more worn down, I think.
Yeah, but about the stress of it.
Okay, so what about...
We want to talk about one thing about that, though, that, you know, that the big change is that, is in, it was talked about briefly at the meeting, is that Bend would be treated differently than Deschutes County, which will cause, we're in a very unique position again compared to other counties. Other counties would be completely in or completely out. Our county would be just the Bend city, or city boundaries. So it will cause changes, you know, challenges to, you know, gas stations. Aren't we all going to drive to Redmond or outside Bend to get our gas?
Yes.
Because it's going to be 30, tumalo.
The Shell station in tumalo.
Government-sanctioned dislocation of industry, essentially. So that was, that's going to be an interesting twist.
So Tom said, what about AOC?
Yeah, we have, have we always paid all the voluntary ones? That's my question. There's a lot of voluntary ones. My copy has all...
We've done different things.
If you have the copy, can you tell us what they are?
I didn't bring it with me. Mine is highlighted in pink. Yes, no, this isn't mine.
Yeah, typically, the AOC invoice to us each year includes several components. There's a base component for basically running the organization. And then there's a series of what they term voluntary dues that have been added over the years for different specific initiatives that AOC would lead. You know, and they're listed in front of you there. In the past, this commission has paid the full amount. You have set a specific amount that you're comfortable with and told AOC allocate them as you see fit, you know, across these various... I think one year, you specifically removed one of them. Last year, for example, the bill was $53,000 and change, including these various voluntary components. Your direction was to pay $50,000 flat and, again, to be allocated as AOC desired. But that was the specific amount you were comfortable with. The year before that, in 2018, the total amount, including the voluntary components, was 53, and you elected, or the commission elected to pay the full 53. The invoice that you have in front of you now for 2020 has gone up a fair amount.
$9,000.
Yeah, 62 or 63,000, including the components. So the question then is what you might feel comfortable with as far as a payment to AOC ranging from the full amount to a specific amount that you feel comfortable with, to selecting different pieces of that invoice.
So remember, this, it's a discussion at the AOC board level. Summertime conference last summer, about eight or nine months ago, was the time that this was really laid out, you know, the formula, how counties, based on population and geography, you know, might be allocated a membership fee. And it was, it was obvious then, though, that we'd be probably paying about $10,000 more. So, and I think I've mentioned at one of these meetings in the past that that's what we're talking about. So as I say, it wasn't unexpected. So that's the 38,000.
I'm really in support of paying them all. I think is the, I mean, despite the fact, I do think we should take stands on big issues, not just on the little easy ones, and we should be able to debate it. And we, but that's a specific topic, and it's not going to go away. But in the end, we're, on all that legislative stuff, we're... not going to go away. But in the end, we're, on all that legislative stuff, we're advisory people. We're not, we're not sitting in the legislature deciding. If we were there, I'd be more, more adamant. But I also think we seem to have a lot of involvement with it. I mean, not just the commissioners, but you know, Chris Doughty's in on the transportation call. Scott Lang has been involved. I mean, I, I think a lot of our departments have been very involved in, in, you know, so I, I don't know what's a reasonable amount, but I, it seems like it's a way that we connect with the rest of the state and learn, and benefit from that as a county. And they've been facilitating us, you know, trying to help us. I mean, I thought Susan Morgan did a good job really with the fire bill when, I didn't realize what she'd been doing, but they'd been negotiating out the land use and defensible space part to another kind of planning committee, which is really smart because it kind of achieved what we were trying to do is that, that's a real big task. You don't really want LDC, LCDC doing it. You don't, there's a lot of things to it that were.
They were, they were in alignment in, in the outcome, yeah. So there's the base general fund dues, public lands, veterans, you know, a bunch of great things in there. Public lands dues is a kind of its own thing. It ends up being a federal lobbying effort. I don't know if you had heard or seen the Jay Sullivan Company was extended by six months so that they're available to us as AOC members, especially if somebody goes to Washington DC during this short session.
He was on the phone.
Yeah, well, and I had to ask, I said, I thought we were doing an RFP and who's been selected. They said, yep, but they were selected for a six-month extension, which is now where started.
Well, that's ironic because in the past, you know, with the congressman we had, I think if he would have stayed there, we would have needed a lobbyist less. I think we're going to need one more than we did because we don't even know who the congressperson's going to be and what their views are going to be, whether they have any access to anybody. And so in a way, I think that fee may have, be of value to us, especially with the fire and the forest issues. Because we don't have great connections in Washington that we can work through. So that would be the reason.
So what was the?
I'm supportive of the complete bill to, or the invoice.
What was the charge for the shortage for AOC that Deschutes County had to fork over?
Yeah, I want to say that our, our piece was calculated roughly the same amount as our annual dues, so.
So we paid that in what year?
Two years ago, as a separate amount. It wasn't part of the.
Wasn't part of the fifty-three or, so eighteen, we paid fifty-three and then you're saying we paid another fifty-three?
I'd have to check, Commissioner. I don't remember the specific amount or date. I can certainly do that and bring it back next week if you like. There's no, I don't think there's any rush on paying these.
Yeah, I would just like to know because it seemed like hiring a new executive turned out to be a process that took a lot longer than maybe it should have. So anyway.
Well, I agree with you on that. I mean, I think a lot of things are not done particularly well, but unless, unless we get more involved, it's, you leave it up to the people that show up. And that's, I mean, who created all these financial problems? What, I'm not sitting in on those meetings. So I don't know, I don't read the budgets. I'm, I'm worried about Deschutes County, but the, yeah, the organization, there's good reasons to not, what I wish we could do is somehow go back to the people that made the mistakes and, and, but what ends up happening is we're paying for other people's mistakes. And the hiring shouldn't, I mean, I would have hired two, two of the people they've already said they wouldn't hire. So, but I'm not on the hiring committee and I don't, you know, and I've changed my mind about some of the people I've voted for already, about what they're.
What they're doing.
You know, that's one hundredth of our job is who those, I mean, just meet them at events and, you know, but I'm real disappointed with the leadership team, right personally, but on a variety of issues.
Well, what I find is unfortunate is if you do go over there and if you're not part of that little committee, you don't get to vote at the meeting at, at lunch, after lunch. And that to me.
Legislative committee.
Yeah, I, I, that seems wrong. It seems like everyone that is there should get to vote. And that really, I, I find that very unfortunate.
Well, you could bring it up because we, we get to vote in all the subcommittee meetings.
Right, we can vote in the sub, and that's what I do. And then it doesn't.
But you can be just as influential by what you say as by the vote. I mean, votes changed yesterday based on what people said. I mean, I think, don't you, Commissioner Bone? I mean, and, and again, with regard to leadership, maybe you should have been in one of those positions. I mean, I don't, I don't know how they allocate all these discretionary ones for counties oversized and everything. There's a lot of stuff, but even who's picked. But I'm not, I mean, I'm still vice chair of governments, but it wasn't, you know, I'm just there. I bet they're, again, I go back to leadership. Should someone have recognized that maybe all three of us should be voting members or figure out a way to do that or whatever.
Well, and the committees change around. We've had different committees. When I first got involved, I was on a telecommunications and technology committee and now that we don't have that committee anymore.
And housing is now part of health.
So, yeah, I mean, there could be more committees with more leadership or different.
Health people.
Right.
Deciding how, as opposed to transportation, economic development people doing it, which are a different mindset.
Definitely.
And, but I've tried for two years to get a housing committee specifically so we could really work on that. And, you know, the last director didn't want to do it and, you know, and it.
Well, I would, I would still like to see that number and, and we could discuss it next week.
Yeah, well, we could write a letter. You know, we could actually, I wouldn't mind writing a letter saying what we're disappointed in or what we'd like to see more of.
I'd like to see a housing committee separated from.
And I would like to see, and I would like to see everybody voting because why can you vote in the morning and you can't vote at one o'clock?
I think sometimes, you know, this desire to avoid a debate was interesting.
Oh, yeah. Well, and I, yeah, I could put some words. I, I see a paragraph in there. Because I don't see it as a conflict. I see it as vibrant discussion.
Exactly. Isn't that what we're supposed to be?
Yeah, I think all three of us did. And there was, the leadership, you know, the motion to table was made by leadership. Alex. It wasn't made by just a member. It was, because they were, they didn't want that to come up. And so those are things that in our future relationship with them, but.
Okay.
Tom, here's your.
Okay, what other things? We've tabled that, Tom.
It was quite interesting.
Tabled it.
We've tabled that.
Monday was exhausting. What else do we have?
Wanted to run a, a concept by you. Over the last year or so, we've had some citizens that have come to the Board of Commissioners lobby who were, you know, maybe made some of our front office staff a little bit uncomfortable. So as you saw now, Sharon now has the Plexiglas partitions. We're planning on doing something similar for the other two offices up front. But another concept that has been discussed is to have a more secure front to our, the employee section of our lobby, similar to what the county clerk's office has now. If you've been down in their office, they have that kind of walled partition with kind of open, glassless windows in there and then a door to get in behind where the employees are. So our front office staff would, would like to have something like that in the commissioners' area, but it's, it's not cheap. So before, we have kind of a rough, rough cost estimate of between thirty and thirty-five thousand to do that in our lobby. The only way to refine that number is to, you know, begin working with a designer to kind of bring that down. But according to our facilities department, that's, that's on the rough order of cost. So before we get too far down this past path, wanted to check in with you and see if that's something that you're comfortable with us at least pursuing at this point. We can, you can think about it. We can, we can, you know, ask for some simple sketches to see what it looks like. We can, you know, take another look at the clerk's office just to, you know, to get another feel for it. So anyway, that's the concept. Wanted to check in with you and see kind of where you're at on that idea.
Well, when they did Sharon's office, I asked her if it was bulletproof. And I'm going like, oh my gosh, she's getting bulletproof and nobody else is.
This, yeah, no, this is not really to, you know, prevent somebody from getting back. It's, it's a, a barrier that makes it a lot harder for someone to physically accost one of our staff members. They'd literally have to jump through a window. There would be a, a door off to the side with a, you know, card lock, you know, similar to what's on the front. But it doesn't, it's not bulletproof, doesn't make it impossible for somebody to get through, but it certainly provides an obstacle and.
What they did, I think, in the clerk's office was really excellent. I mean, I, I've been a real opponent of going to a point where it feels like you're walking into, it's, you're no longer in the people's owned business. You're in somebody else's world. And that, and so I, I didn't, I don't like when they get the way they have gotten in some buildings now and some public buildings where it's like, do we still own this, you know, as people? Or, so I like the friendliness of the clerk's office. I mean, if you could do something along that line, I'm okay with it. I don't know that it, maybe it provides a better sense of security for, but it also does create a little more formality to people. Maybe they wouldn't act the same way if it seems a little more rigid, I guess. That's what my feeling is. So I, I'm, I'm not against looking into, you know, thinking about and doing that. The other I wondered about was, so why can't we just, when people are being obnoxious, just kick them out?
Well, we can at some point. We don't typically do that right out of the gate. We have behavioral health staff, our end crisis team responds here. If, if there's a, a need for that, we have our designated deputy, Deputy Blalack, who's available if people are uncomfortable. But we haven't had a situation that I'm aware of where someone's, you know, walked in the door and we immediately make them leave. We, we have trespassed two individuals who are sort of repeat folks who have come here and occupied a lot of people's time in various offices, not, not physically threatening, but certainly disruptive to operations. So in those cases, we have issued a trespass notice which prevents them or precludes them from coming to certain county facilities.
So you're saying, but we're slow to kick, you know, people, ask people to leave? I'm, is that what I guess I'm saying?
That's probably accurate, yeah.
Why don't we be less slow? Be faster to ask them leave. Say, you know, we've told you this twice, you need to leave. You know, when they keep, I think what I get a sense is some of the people just keep arguing the same point repeatedly or saying outrageous things. It's like, and, and that's what I've done in business, when people got that way. You know, your customer service are in, but you don't, it's not your job to keep talking to somebody over the same thing. And so why don't we just say, hey, you know, we've reached an impasse, would like you to leave. And if they don't, then just say, well, I'm going to call them, I'm going to call the sheriff's office. Is that, is there?
That is kind of what happens.
I think part of it is.
It seems like it's more angst about doing it than I would have. I don't have that much angst about doing it because it's like.
I think part of it is sometimes somebody comes in and they, they continue asking a question, the same question. And in those cases, we have a hard time for a basis to ask them to leave. Usually what we have to rely on is that they were threatening or they raised their voice. And so it's, it's more of those things versus somebody who comes in and, and maybe our.
Who's deciding that it's not just as bad to put up that with repeat, the same question repeated five times? I mean, why not just say, you know, we can't help you?
I think part of it is, is just the access to public services.
Well, but I don't know, you know, example, but you've done what you can do and that's all we owe. You know, it's, if they ask the same question a third time, I mean, people approach us sometimes that way with want to talk over it. Pretty soon you realize they don't, they're just, it's not why they're, I, I don't mind that some go to mental health, but some aren't really mental health issues. I mean, we could say they were, but they're just, that's who they are. And there's, they may be mad about something or whatever. And it's, I guess I'm just saying, I've never had a discussion about what our standard should be, but if I, we're kind of having that discussion now. But if we did, I'd be more tolerable of asking people to leave sooner because people at the front office are trying to do work. You're, you're, and so it probably isn't them asking them to leave, it's somebody from the back comes up, we'd like you to leave because we have work going on here and we can't, you're not asking us anything relevant.
You know, I think Commissioner, typically what we've come down to is where is that line where it becomes disruptive? Because as a public facility, the public has certain rights of access. And even though our offices aren't what you'd call a traditional public forum, there's some case law that certainly would indicate that generally speaking, they have a right to at least come to the common areas of our offices. And so I know in the time I've been involved both here and over in the valley, it's that fine line. And, and we look to the commissioners actually to kind of where that line is on where we say, okay, enough, you know, we've, we've been cordial and polite with you. You, we're not getting anywhere. And now it's risen to the level of disrupting our business operations and therefore we need to ask you to leave. And we've certainly aired, you know, Eric and I often get called if, if, if Sean's not around or, and you just don't know where that line is. And I agree, in a private business, that line would be reached probably much sooner. But in as much as it is government, you're their elected representatives. We, we really bend over backwards to be as accommodating as possible before we say enough.
I guess I'm saying, maybe you're being more accommodating than at least as one commissioner, I think you need to be. It seems like, because I hear about the people from, you know, Sharon or, you know, whoever, and they, it shouldn't, they shouldn't be subjected to it. I mean, maybe if we're subjected to it, it's our problem, but.
And we do.
Staff shouldn't be in this position of, because they're the least able to say, you know, get out of here.
I agree. And.
But that was true in a, in a business when you have a front office person. You know, some of them are real good at getting people to go, but, but they, but generally they come back and get somebody else to.
And, and we designate folks so that if, so that it's not taking up their time. And, and I have on probably a dozen times taken a person aside in a room so they're not disrupting the general operations and have, have talked to that person.
But I want to say that ninety-nine percent of the time, it's, the people are really very respectful. So we're just talking about a couple issues.
Right, yeah.
But.
That's good clarity.
You know, because, yeah, most people, it's, it's wonderful that they come by and see us.
But what do you think should be the standard for the ones that are, really aren't there to accomplish anything or just venting or, or maybe we should have more information from the examples, but I don't know if we have to today, but.
Okay. Well, I think it's something that.
Well, the request was, we want to take a look at the entrance and get an estimate of a little bit more, what it would look like if there was a more of a, a window, you know, and a wall instead of just open cubicle. So I do support that. Let's take it a little bit farther, look at the flow and the security aspects of the front. We have put that kind of swing gate in there since I've been in office. But yeah, let's talk about what the next level would look like.
Okay.
Okay.
I, just a couple of things real quick. I know, I don't want to take up any time that any of you might want. But on the Veterans Village, just a quick update. There was a meeting last week with county staff, city staff to talk about the concept a little bit further. The, to do from that was for the city to come back and come up with an estimate on sort of from their perspective, both land use effort and cost, what might be required and how much might it cost from the city's perspective and as well as some infrastructure related questions. So they did that. They gave us a very, very rough draft, according to them, that they intend to refine. It was, there was a couple, couple land use requirements related to zone change, comp plan amendment. A big ticket item had to do with, you know, and a big item of discussion is the fact of the right of way that runs north-south through that parcel there and the fact that there's a very large rock outcropping on that site. So their, their estimate for basically extending the street at some point in the future was very high in the order of, you know, four hundred thousand dollars. But, so I, you know, I'm not sure that that comes into play for the use that we're talking about here. So there's another meeting scheduled Tuesday to follow up on, on the last meeting, you know, between county and city staff. I'm, I'm out of town, but I'm going to call into that meeting. Both Nick and Peter are representing us there. So, but I wanted to kind of let you know progress and, you know, what we've been working on since we last spoke.
Well, that's great you're doing that. Did, did you, did you forward on the, what they came up with?
I haven't yet, only because they stressed so much that it was very draft. I can though, if you would, yeah, very, very.
I'd like to see it because it's, I mean, we're, I'm as knowledgeable as they are about the project. And I think some of the other members want to probably see what's going on. I mean, I don't, I don't think it's really left up to the two staffs to figure this out. So, I mean, I mean, we're not going to make this without Kovo and Bend Heroes and some of those things too. So I'm glad they're working on it. I did talk to Council Moseley and felt, he did feel like he was aware of what was going on, more or less. And he was supportive and surprised that he'd met any resistance at all. So. he was supportive and surprised that he'd met any resistance at all. So about the idea, that was interesting because, and he thought that generally the council was pretty supportive of this concept. But they weren't at that point aware of the, any issues with neighbors, you know, having made complaints to us. So that was news to him. So somehow we need to let our fellow, you know, the counselors know that issue because it would come up, I suppose, in a hearing or something, it was land use hearing.
Is there a specific zone change or something that needs to happen? And that's a city of Bend process?
Yes.
And full-on public notification to surrounding properties? Because, yeah, I've just been relying on that, the fact that we've started a process, but there's a step in there that's gonna be for everybody.
Now, what's interesting though, is a possibility is that four thousand one, if it passes, could eliminate all that need. And we could just, my impression, I haven't really read the bill to see, but it seems like what the speaker was talking about is, well, you'd be able to just cite things. So I'm not sure we couldn't just do without zone changes.
And you're exactly right. And I was gonna mention that next, that, that both city and county have acknowledged that, that that's really, we don't know yet where that's gonna land in terms of, is it city and county land? Is it just city? How much of a supersiting element that is? But you are absolutely correct that if something like what has been discussed so far is passed, then, you know, the applicant, which could be, you know, either us or the group that we've been talking to could come in and say, I propose to do this right here, right now. And the law would presumably allow that without any kind of zone change or, you know.
Well, I was told, and also that I asked about that thing, is it just listed limited to cities or goes to counties? And somebody I talked to at the legislature said that they thought it was countywide. And it might've been Representative Helt, but I, anyway, we need to find that out. But the other part is that there's actual money, you know, forty millions. We'd be in a very good position where if we were organized enough to actually ask for it, to help with the-
I already did. I put a note in her-
Well, y'all, who?
Um, Tina Kotek.
Yeah.
No, no, I went there and left a note in.
But I'm not sure she's the only person to ask. I mean, I think we need to, I know, but once it gets passed, I think it's an application process through some, it'll probably be through one of the departments.
Well, they said it's for Lane and Marion predominantly.
I don't think it is.
That's what they said in our meeting Monday morning. That's-
I think there may be different components to the bill, one portion of which does apply to those counties, but the, there's another portion that really applies.
We have two people on this housing committee. I mean, two of our, both Zika and Helt are on the housing committee. Well, we probably should engage in that bill some more then, figure out-
There was supposed to be a hearing on it on Monday, and I think they flipped it to today.
You went to it?
No, it was, it was canceled Monday.
Okay.
It was canceled. That's why I took a note and just left a little note and said, you know, we had a thousand homeless in Shits County and we definitely needed help.
Yeah, it was canceled. Or it was postponed because there were some amendments that came in. So I haven't looked at it today.
Well, maybe Whitney could kind of run down, get us what-
We're watching closely. As soon as we get amendments, we'll share them.
Well, and the real issue then is there'll be hearings on the other side. So this was a house committee it's coming out of. So there would be hearings on the senate side probably that would be worth being involved in. That'll be in the next two weeks, I assume.
Right, the chamber is going over on next Wednesday.
Yeah.
If we need them to do something for it.
So I'll stop there. Just for future discussion, I wanted to, I'll follow up you, with you on the Bend, city Bend urban renewal project and the idea of testimony. The, I had an update for you on the, some work we've been doing on a potential electric vehicle charging station here, which looks like we have some costs, but it, the grant money ran out, so that'll be for a later day. I think Dave had sent a note to each of you on some ideas we have on a enhanced contract review out of the legal office. So, and Commissioner Henderson had suggested we talk about that at a work session, which we need to do now if you'd like to, or, or put that one on the list for follow-up. You all got the note yesterday from Peter Gatawski on the historic preservation committee work. He was over there in Salem on Monday, which was great news for us on the, on essentially having veto power in the proposed rules to a historic designation. We can, if you, and as he suggests, if you want to talk about that further or have more discussion, we're, we're happy to set that up. The only other thing, I don't know if you, you were gonna bring up the Project Wildfire interviews. So, but that's all I have.
Yeah, we still gotta make a decision about Project Wildfire appointments. There's binder available. I think Sharon had it at the desk.
Yeah, I have it. I went through them all. I'd have to go get it to remember who's who.
So we're, I mean, somehow, let's take time to do these things because some of the stuff, you know, it, it can slip a little, but it gets silly at some point if we just don't make decisions.
No, I agree with that. I mean, we haven't had a meeting this week. We could do it now if you want me to go get it. I, well, I was concerned, I looked it up and one of the members isn't a registered voter, which seems kind of odd that somebody would be, at least somebody looked it up for me and somebody'd be applying for the, the committee on that. But I had some, I had some input. You want me to go get the book?
Uh, yeah, let's do that. I mean, because we can do it in five, ten minutes. We done with it? Yeah. So we take a five-minute recess?
Okay, five-minute recess.
Good.
We did start at nine oh five, didn't we?
Yeah, those three. Oh, Ed reminded Sharon to remind Tom to remind me. Ah, whatever, I'm drunk.
Well, here's the list of who we had. We were gonna get one of each category.
Yeah, so I had just verbally stated that the first three may be appointed and then interview the next three for a business seat. And that was just a starting point a couple of weeks ago when I mentioned it.
Oh my God, this is from December. Application is closed in here. This is from December eleventh. So had, so it's been floating around, huh?
There's only been one Project Wildfire meeting, right, since then?
Oh, the other thing I wanted to bring up regarding wildfire is the other free fire day in, on June, if we can add one. We haven't done that.
Yeah, that was from the retreat. We're scheduling a-
We are? A cost?
Well, yeah, we got cost, but we're gonna, we're gonna put that on a board work session agenda for you to kind of give us some direction with both Ed and Tim.
Thank you very much. Okay, so there's one that isn't registered?
Yeah, that, this Nick Ahan. Cause I look at, with David Nicholas. It just seems kind of odd when somebody's not, like, what does that mean? Because now you get registered just by having a-
So how many do we need then? We're, oh, four applicants that are applied could potentially appoint the four up.
So I would represent, I'd rec, I would move to appoint Ken Kemna, Ken Kemna, Redman Fire Chief, has a lot of experience, knowledge. Robert Polley from-
Where's he from?
He's with the Red Cross. I can't remember where he, and then Brandon Fogel, Fogelman.
What's his business? Do you know?
Oh, I can tell you.
Do you know any of these people, Tony?
I know, but I've reviewed all the resumes. The Fire Chief in Redmond, I've met a few times. He's come to a lot of those meetings already. He's very involved. I mean, I guess Oliver Tatum has been around town now and, you know, he's got his story about losing a house in a fire many years ago too.
Right.
Well, I have my fire story.
Well, I, the, yeah, so Polley is the one that's on a Red Cross, is supervisor, disaster services volunteer.
Okay.
That was kind of relevant, I thought. And the other one was
We did the Noxious Weed Board already, didn't we? Okay, so that one's good. A maximum of twenty-one or twenty-seven appointees? Okay.
He's his, he's more of a citizen. What, he's, what's he applied for? Under the business deal?
Which one?
Fogelman.
Yes, business?
He's a extensive background in logistics, operates sales. Abbot Outdoorsman, personal interest protector, it's wilderness fires, organs wellness, forests, and communities. Doesn't really say what people work for exactly.
So-
Ahan has a good resume, but he's the one that's not registered. So I, I'm always suspicious, what does that mean when somebody?
Well, because we're at seventeen and we've had up to a maximum of twenty-seven, do we add five of them?
Well, I don't think we should add everybody just because they apply.
Okay.
So those are my three recommendations.
Okay.
Kemna, Polley, and Fogelman.
Okay, and Tony, who did you want?
So we're getting down to making recommendations specifically, huh?
Yes.
So
You want the book?
The Servpro Disaster Recovery, I mean, that'd be a really interesting person to have on there. So you're saying not registered to vote?
Yeah, it just seemed kind of weird.
Question, yeah, I mean, it'd be, so I mean, he would be something that jumps out at me, somebody. Well, and we could get to all six of them. Also, remember, I mean, maximum total employ-
Twenty-seven, yeah. That's why I said-
One vacancy under business. We could put a, any of these folks under, you know, other categories if we wanted to. So, yeah, I don't know that I-
Read the book?
We're at a good time where we're adding, you know, the state legislature's talking about the, you know, a big fire bill, whatever that means. We have people that want to get engaged. People still have a memory of big fires in California and Washington. So I'm not opposed to adding all six of them.